Let it go.
I have a meeting to order for Monday, December 9th, 2019, and call for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Our pledge of allegiance is to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, individual with liberty and justice for all.
The grade school kids even recite that?
Heck, yeah.
Kids that? I think we did. I mean, we did it every day.
I substitute teach once in a while. Some classes do and some don't. I guess it's up to the teacher.
Madam Chairman, I've reviewed the minutes and I have a couple of minor corrections.
Okay, you need to...
I make a motion that we approve the minutes with some minor corrections.
Okay, you gotta give me a minute to get my computer going, because it was doing updates.
We've got plenty of time.
Let's discuss your corrections. What paragraph first?
Page two. Top of the page is an editorial. The spelling of lose and loose. That's just strictly editorial.
Okay.
And the next one we need to talk about, and I need to wait till Dawn gets set up before we sit down and talk for a second. I suppose we ought to have a second anyway, hadn't we?
This is from Aljo, and this is their process that they will deal with our youth in their facility if they go overrun. And then that's a bill.
Okay.
And I have given a copy to the county attorney and to... into the sheriff's office. But Aljo thought you guys would like to know that. And then that I received today. Okay. This one's taking longer, so where are we at? You said in the...
On the second page. Line two is loose. Should be L-O-S-E. Minor editorial.
I have a correction. Oh, never mind. No, it's in there. It's correct. What were your other corrections?
Well, I think we ought to have a second first.
I'll second.
Okay. My other correction is down under the Daryl Otting paragraph. The issue there, and I think we ought to put it in the minutes that it was brought up, is whether we can have a executive session over the telephone. We don't say telephone. I think we should make it clear what the issue is. So I would recommend with people who are not present on the telephone, or whatever Dawn thinks makes that sound right.
Well, I think he said over the airways, but I wasn't really, so I saw it as that.
Well, it could be internet like now. Internet or Skype. Any other...
So I changed it to who...
Airways, telecommunications, something. And Alexis, do you know that before? We've talked about this before, about having executive session, like we had with you last week. And then we had before with Mr. Hay before you had. And there's a question, is that legal or not? And you thought it was, isn't that correct?
There is no prohibition, which means, yes, you can do it. It's not cited in the statute that you cannot do that. So it's not even an exemption. You know, we kind of started to talk about the other thing he was questioning, whether or not we have an exemption to make a purchase over $25,000 for certain, you know, particular conditions. And so the answer is no, there's no prohibition of doing an executive session. Like you said, that's why we were doing that with attorneys from Topeka.
Now, do we have an official law or attorney general opinion that says that? So this is going to come up again in a year from now, and we're going to go through it again. So I think it'd be good, or if we had some law or something, we could quote saying this law says we can have an executive session via Skype or telephone.
Well, there's not, there isn't necessarily a law that identifies... I mean, I can look and see if there's some sort of attorney general opinion discussion about questioning that, but there's not going to be a law that identifies this is legal. It's basically, the law doesn't say this is illegal. Do you know what I'm saying?
I wonder if we should consult maybe our county attorney or... Well, you know, it's no problem with me, Alexis. I just want to make...
Well, no, it is an issue with me right now, because I have some personal things that are going on that prohibit me from being there in person.
Sure.
But, you know, and you always, we always have the option, if you really feel uncomfortable, of me sitting out on an executive session. However, when decisions are being made, if I don't really know what the topic was, you know, it's more about protecting people's privacy. For example, you're not prohibited from sharing the information in an executive session necessarily. It's more or less about protecting it so that it's not publicly accessible. Does that make sense?
Yeah.
Yeah.
No, and I'm not, I'm not, I don't have a conflict with Alexis. It's just, I just want to get the correct ruling on, is that all?
Well, if it's...
I put some thought into what Mr. Otting said. You know, we could have, should have been seeking bids. I think we got caught up in more or less, were we going to do something or were we not going to do something versus how we were going to do it. So I think he had some points.
Well, you can argue safety and immediacy for fixing that road out there. We get... But I, I'd like to go ahead and drop my second one and just leave that Daryl Otting paragraph alone, based on your statement that if it is not specifically excluded, it's all right. And then if somebody challenges it, then we'll fight it out however they challenge it. So I would recommend we leave that whole issue alone and not put it in the minutes.
Well, could we just change it to with people who are attending remotely? Because it's from a remote location, so that's the concern, as in not...
Yeah, that's instead of...
You can't really have an executive session with someone who's not there. You want to be there in some way, shape, or form.
Yeah. Remotely'd work. I like that.
I would suggest with people who are attending remotely...
Works for me.
Yeah, that's fine with me, too. I just, some people question it, you know?
You had a spelling correction.
Well, lose and loose. That's just an editorial. That was just spell check. Didn't catch it.
That one, Dawn?
Yeah.
Okay. Anything else?
I'm good.
I have nothing else.
Did somebody second it?
I seconded it.
He seconded it, yeah. And we've discussed it. What should we do next, Madam Chairman?
For the vote, those in favor of the minutes as corrected?
Aye.
The ayes?
Aye.
Aye. None opposed. Mr. Vice Chairman, would you please open the correspondence?
Right, and we have some... Well, first, Dawn, do we just go with this transfer view?
Yes. So the packet is the packet that Aljo got, and then the list of stuff is the things that is important for you guys to understand, how they will handle our juveniles if they're full.
Aljo Wallace gave us, he has an update. You know, we had him go to one of our meetings about the use of another detention facility memorandum of understanding. If there's a transfer of like our youth, it's a process here. I don't know if I need to go through it today, or if we need to prove anything.
I think more importantly, we need to decide what we're going to do with that position in the future. Do we want to assign someone to attend that board and, you know, to attend those meetings and be on that board more permanently? I mean, I know Mr. Wallace said he would do it through the end of the year, I think.
Right. I, I personally don't want to do it unless someone else wants to find a way.
No, I, I understand that.
Jim, would you want to be on that board?
Well, yeah, if we have, if we need to send somebody, I'd sit on the board. I can do that.
Did you hear Jim said he would do that?
Sure, if he wants to. I think it's quarterly.
Monthly. I thought it was quarterly, but Aljo said it's monthly.
Oh.
And they pay your mileage to go. They were reimbursing the county, but he said that they told them this last time that they changed that, and they're just reimbursing each of their board members.
They do this in Junction City over time, don't they?
Yeah, here and there's...
Well, they used to travel around this county, so I don't know.
Well, I think Aljo usually always went to Junction City, didn't he?
Yes, I believe it's consistently in Junction City now.
All right. Okay. Yeah, I'll, we have one in December?
Yes. And you could go with Aljo if you wanted to.
Maybe I'll do, I'll talk to Aljo and go with him maybe in December and see what the deal is.
For some reason, I mean, it's like this week or next week.
So we just want to, did we make a motion, Alexis, to appoint Jim to be on that board?
I'll do that. I move to appoint Commissioner Gableman, Lincoln County Representation, to the...
NCK RJDF.
What is the proper name there? Juvenile Detention?
Uh, North Central Regional Juvenile Detention Facility.
Yeah, it's North Central Kansas Regional Juvenile Detention Facility.
Excuse me, I'll edit that. North Central Regional Juvenile Detention Facility Board.
And I'll second that.
So it is moved and seconded to appoint Mr. Gableman, and under discussion, I'll just say for the year 2020, as we've already asked Mr. Wallace to continue for the rest of this year. Those in favor of the appointment, vote aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. None opposed.
And I see the next meeting on this document says it's December 18th, right there, Jim.
That's why I brought my calendar.
So I'll give Jim that material. And I have a letter here from the hospital board president, Bill Houston. He wants, he's calling a special meeting of the hospital board for this Wednesday, December 11th, at 2:00 p.m. at the Lincoln County Hospital Meeting Room. And I'll try to attend that.
That would be excellent, if you get it.
I don't know what it's about, that's all. We have a letter for that. And then we got some other... Another letter here. Well, here, first I'll go through a bill. There's a bill from Aljo for the nursing home. It's a powered DPS large combi, whatever that is, $1,466.
For what?
It's just a powered DPS large combo, 227 kilograms or KG. So is that the... That lift? I'm not sure what that is.
Aljo, we have had write several bills for them. I just don't know what that would be for.
It says County Parts for Life or Lift. Yeah, County Parts for Lift.
Oh, for the, okay.
It's part of the lift thing, so...
At this point, for the rest of the year, we need to be paying bills out of Fund 44.
Do you want to wait till next week to approve it, or...
No.
Or...
No, I think it can be approved. I was just commenting to Dawn. I think Fund 44 is where we need to take the December bills out to make sure that we can retain that $28,000 or $26,800, whatever it came out to be.
Okay.
So you think we should approve this today?
Yes.
You want me just to initial it, or?
Sure, unless we have any opposition.
You have any opposition, Jim?
We have none. You want to sign it?
I'll just sign it. I'll initial it then. It's a lift. And then we have a summary of parliamentary procedure, how to run a good meeting. Someone gave us, I guess they want us to run a good meeting here. So we'll review that sometime.
Well, we have, according to the KAC, we have a specific set of rules that are supposed to follow Robertson, I believe, so we're not going to use that.
And we have a letter here. I'll open it. From, it's from NCP, RCP, and NCKCN. I'll open this letter. I don't know what it's for. Looks like it's just a Christmas card here. Says Merry Christmas from North Central Regional Plumbing Commission. That's all that is, so. A Christmas card. Then from Street Plumbing, we got a bill. Magnetic fire door release. How to work on a magnetic fire door release.
That was last week.
Okay.
Yeah, or a couple of weeks ago. You guys had asked why it was just labor only. So what my note says is that when Greg, I talked to Greg, Greg said that they called the company, apparently Jonathan was trying to change out the magnetic strips, and he overblowed the circuit or something. So he called the company, and they told him what to trace down, and it took quite, quite some time to trace it down, and they still couldn't find the problem. Come to find out, it had only blown a fuse. So then, once they replaced the fuse, so then, to prevent that from happening again, Greg went ahead and installed the rest of the magnetic closures on the doors, because Jonathan is not an electrician and didn't feel comfortable doing it after he locked the system up. So that is what that bill is.
What was the dollar amount of that bill?
$130. Two hours' labor. And like Dawn said, Dawn wrote down here the same thing what she just said, that fixing the foundation, there was a fuse after diagnosing it, then installed a new magnetic pieces to that door. So, and you'd already signed it, Alexis. So I guess we approved it. We just wanted to know what it was for.
Yeah.
So this is already approved, then?
Well, yeah, I guess. I didn't realize you signed it.
He wants to re-sign it, or?
No. No, we're good if you guys are good.
Fine with me. Is that a rub, Alexis? All right. Okay, we have a... This is a North Central Regional Plumbing Commission, says an air systems corridor research for Fort Riley. Oh, when Doug McKinney comes, he's going to talk about this, I guess. We have Doug.
Yeah, there's an airway that people are using for drones and whatnot that comes through a portion of Lincoln County.
Right, okay. And Doug's on the agenda, so I guess we'll discuss this later with him, okay? And that's all I have. That's all we have for mail.
Okay.
Do you have anything else?
We did the minutes. If that's the rest of the correspondence, we have Mr. Schneider. He's ready. It's 20 after, almost.
Yeah, he's here.
Okay.
Want to proceed? Steve, come on up.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Well, I'm here about my road again, and they've regraded it, reshaped it, repacked it, and rained a half inch, 60, 70 hundreds, and back to the same old cut and ruts in it, just like it was before they did that. And previously, when Michael Air was still there, he sanded the 45th Road a half mile from Sean's house to 50th Road, and he told me he was going to sand the rest of it when he got more sand pushed up, but they were out of sand that was pushed up. But it never happened. But that road, you know, with the clay that they put on, out of the gravel pit in question, is just clay, and it's not...
So you're here requesting sand, then, from...
Well, sand or material or something.
Rock or something.
Whatever.
From Sean's house, too?
No, from probably 50th Road. You know, they sanded from Sean's house down to 50th Road.
Yeah.
And that 50th Road runs down to Union Drive, and it's a mile and a half.
Right.
But it needs something. On them ruts, you just, half inch, you just cut in, and you just the same old...
What did Brendan say about it? You talk to Brendan?
I didn't this time about it. He...
Well, Brendan's right here.
I discussed it with him before about the contract and everything, and he said it was a fair weather road.
Well, that was with the contract that I've been given from the commission and yourselves.
But what's a fair weather road? What's the definition? Is there other fair weather roads in Lincoln County that are designated fair weather roads? And what's the difference in material that you would put on it?
Generally, all roads that are not paved. In the state of Kansas, in Lincoln County, are considered fair weather roads, not travel during all time in all weather conditions.
So all the roads, basically, in Lincoln County are fair weather roads?
That's what the state's opinion of a fair weather road.
And when, and when we had another agreement that said all weather road, and they decided all weather road was too encompassing, that could be concrete, asphalt, so they went with the fair weather gravel, gravel road.
So what are you requesting now, then, from what again?
I would like to see some material put on that mile and a half.
So you just, well, there was sand and clay there so far, right?
Not on the mile and a half.
Oh, that's, what is that? That's 50th?
45th Road. 45th's the offset that comes up.
From Union going north to your turnoff.
Yeah, to 45th, yes.
To your lodge there.
You know, and when they reshaped it and they repacked it, or it's hard to pack dry dirt, but it looked really good. But the first time it rained, you're just right back to...
Well, anytime you put, we got new gravel there, you know, the last year, last year. Anytime we're going to have new gravel, it's going to be sloppy for a while, till over time, it'll get better.
But, you know, we probably had 14 rains last summer and spring, you know. It's had a lot of moisture.
Right, I know.
And it, I mean, it's had years of rain, really, so...
Well, we had a wet year. But the last few months, it's not been wet, so...
You know, when they put gravel on it, you know, three inches ain't very, you know, probably less than how many yards per mile with three inches of dirt being, or gravel?
Depends on the width of the road, the 16 to 1800 yards. So realistically, when you build a gravel road with those conditions out there, you want a packed base to be three to four inches. Anymore, you can't go on off setup, it'll continue to rut up like it's been doing. Looking at, in spots there, you've got eight to 10 inches of material there, because they have laid more than just that gravel down. There has been sand and drake, and there is, before I even came in, they've laid other material down. And it gets to the point where it's almost too thick to where it can't, it will take a very, very long time for it to form that solid crust that you get from a gravel road. So any gravel road, regardless of where it is, when you build a new one, it takes time for it to set up and to form that hardship. It takes repeated drying and wetting. So when it gets wet, it becomes sloppy. When it dries out, the clay particles that are binding everything together, the excess clay floats out as the dust, and the minus 200-sid material floats out as that dust. And that's how you, in order to establish your road, it takes time. It's not going to become a paved road, even if it's a well track. Basically, you need traveling, you need time on it. It's not a main traveled road. It's not traveled road as much as our other gravel roads. So it's going to take more time for it to set up in order to have that crust form.
Well, originally, in the, back to the original agreement, and we had an agreement, what they were supposed to grade and the drainage issues. And what happened was Michael Air, I met with him, and we had an agreement with the county. Michael Air was aware of it. Bob Howe went out and graded this road. He did not follow the agreement at that time. There was areas he was not supposed to grade, because a large percentage of that road was rock. I mean, it was a hard base. You could drive on it. You could drive on it and not cut a track, but they pulled up dirt out of the ditches, up on the road, and they basically screwed up the whole road at that point in time.
That's how you, when you grow the gravel road, that the rock that was there was just the rock steps from limestone layers that are out in that area. That's the proper procedure you build up a, is to pull the ditch.
But he was not aware of the agreement, what he was supposed to, and he went out there and he says, I graded it like we were going to gravel the whole road. And that was his statement right here, I mean, at that point in time. But neither here nor there. It just needs... And it's getting down, this dirt's starting to show through again. I mean...
That mile and a half, primarily is what you're talking about?
That's what I'm mainly talking about. The others, he did, Michael Air sanded that. He put some sand on so thick that you can hardly get through it. Some a little thinner, but he did do that first half mile.
You think Brendan, if we could use that, what's that, packer?
The grid roller?
Yeah, you think that?
That's what we did. A lot of it, there's just, there's almost too much material out there. I'd like to take some core samples of material and run it through a sieve if we have a sieve, or see if I can borrow the shaker machine from Quartzsite, because there's a specific gradation you want to see from your gravel material, your gravel roads. Look, just by looks and feel from when I've been out there, it seems fine, but I'd like to be able to get that test done on it, so that way we can see if we have too many binds, or if we have too large a piece. A lot of it's just, it's going to take time to set up. Instead of mixing the material as they went in with it, when there's a problem, they just cut over length, so you get these pockets of poor material and good material. And that's just, we're trying to fix mistakes that have happened previously to make it better for everyone.
I spoke to Gordon about this a few weeks ago. I had received some messages from both Mr. Schneider and his son, who lives out there. And Gordon said that at the time that they went out there, maybe, I don't know, has it been six weeks since they've been out there? Something like that.
Yeah, probably like that.
But he said at that time, he felt that they had done all they could do until they get some more weather variation to do kind of what Brendan was just describing about some evaporation and consolidation and packing. So I'm wondering, Mr. Schneider, is 45th where it was sanded, you said some of it's too thick. Are the other portions fine? Or are you saying the problem area is just 50th?
Uh, there's some of it too thick as you come off 50th Road up that hill. If you're pulling a bail trailer with a pickup, it's just too thick, and you can't get no traction to get up it. You get on the other side of the hill, and it's thinner, and around the curve by the watershed dam, it's just a slop, lolly mess when it rains. It's too thin right there, but they did, they did put sand on the whole half a mile to some degree. Just wasn't real uniform, I would say. Not as uniform as it should have been, probably.
So what I'm hearing, though, is that adding additional material at this time may not actually solve the problem, because no one's arguing that the material that came out of the pit was not sufficient. I mean, I think we, we had an issue there where a lot of money was spent in a short amount of time to haul a lot of gravel out of one particular pit in that, in that area, and it's caused some issues, because a lot of that material was used right in that, from 181, west on Union, then north on your road there. I don't think anyone's arguing that that was very poor material at the time, but I don't know that stuffing something on top of it is going to be the fix, is my concern.
Like Brendan says, it probably needs more, needs more rock, more rock, larger material rock to bolster that, because, you know, you're still cutting tracks in the same spot. And then you have different width vehicles, and then that really compounds a problem when you try to drive down that road, when you've got a narrow wheelbase pickup and a wide wheelbase. They don't match up, and you're all over the place sometimes. That grabs you. So I just don't know that that little bit of, you know, the clay material you're talking about that came out of the gravel pit, I don't know that it's ever going to be any better. I don't know how, without adding something to it, it isn't, you need that clay to hold it together, and it's got clay, but now it needs something to bind to.
Gordon, you told me that they did, I want to say blend, you used that word, they did blend a portion of that road. Is that particular portion that they did better than the rest of it?
It is. There's two areas, there are two areas where they actually put roadstone on it. They put a load there north of the main concrete bridge. I mean, they're supposed to put a load to the south of the concrete bridge, but they were about 100 yards south of it, and they put it there. And those two areas, those two areas are actually good. There's enough material there that you don't cut in like you do the rest of it. It made a difference in the, in the composition of the road.
Do you know where that material came from?
Came from Quartzsite.
It's the one inch roadstone from Quartzsite.
Okay.
Now, the other thing you was talking about, Union Drive 180, off 181, did extensive work to that, and you guys blended it up. It's got areas.
Yeah, we used five loads of roadstone for that whole stretch there, from 181 all the way past 50th and over. The issue was not the material, there was more to fix, that material brought in to fix the holes. And what was put around that bridge was to prevent a washout from the bridge. And the rest was just re-blending the material that was there, because they just, to build the road, you don't want it layered like a sandwich. You need it mixed. And as, as things would go wrong, they just lay more on top, more on top, more on top. We actually broke the road mist trying to dig up 45th or 50th going north, because it's so dry and they compacted so hard that we needed the moisture in order to get it to roll over, to start blending it again.
And on Union Drive, that mile, they... And on the Union Drive that mile, they, they came in, they put the gravel on out of the zacripit to some degree, then it, when it turned bad, they come in, they put sand on it, drove by, we seen them, they come down the hill, opened their gates and drop, spread sand out, so then they had sand on top of the gravel. Then they come back right off the highway and they put asphalt for a hundred foot, which you can't see no more, because it's been covered up. And then you guys came back and re-blended it all again, but.
That's what it needed.
And it helped.
Later, before it needs to be blended.
It helped most of the areas, but there is a couple of areas that is still cutting ruts in, so. I just feel that it needs some.
Well, it sounds to me like that Brendan knows the problem, has got the expertise to fix it as appropriate, considering budgetary and, and priority problems. Would you agree? All right, he's the expert, we gonna let him fix it?
Well, we've, how many times are we gonna fix it? We fixed it twice.
He hadn't fixed it yet.
Well, they, they have, they did, they have graded all the thing.
We broke our implement trying to use it, we wanted to make a fix for it. And we went out when it was a little too dry and had parked back too much. Once we get moisture again, like we just got this past week, with the wet, with our project outlines up, I'll get my man material up there in order to re-blend that road and pack it and need to set. Because if we add more material to it, it's just gonna exacerbate the problem. There's a reason why these gravel roads don't have sixteen, eighteen inches of gravel on them, it's not a subbase for a highway, you need just a thin layer to form that crust. And to build a crown on the road, that's all done before you ever lay gravel on it, that's all done in the dirtwork. Because if you have eight inches of gravel in the center to build your crown, and only a little bit at the edge, it won't form a nice crust in the center, so water will inundate that roadway. And you'll see those spider webs like I was talking about when I was up there with you originally on a, back in September when I was first hired here. That's where water, because that crust is not forming, because there's too much material in the center, it's inundating the roadway. And the water instead of rolling off the road surface into the ditch, it's absorbing through the roadway and taking material into the ditch as well. So that's one of the problems, it comes with too much material on a road. Either event, over time, over years, it'll eventually form that crust. But to do it right away first time is actually use less material than you would think, in order to get that crust to shape up and form up. It costs less, maintenance is easier on it, and it forms a better driving surface for all the public. So if we keep adding material, which if the commission wants me to, I can, but it's not gonna help the situation out there. But I can, if that's what the commission would like me to do. Reality, I believe we just need to get out there once wet again, re-blend it, re-pack it, and it will take time, it's not something, it's not gonna be an overnight fix. But nothing we can do out there is gonna be an overnight fix short of putting concrete down there.
What I'm hearing is that there's no solution that's immediate, so, Mr. Schneider, I would ask you for a little bit of patience. We're not going to ignore the problem, I think we're going to continue to work on it, but I really don't see that dumping material on it at this time, without having the right weather conditions, is going to actually fix the problem in one fell swoop. If we can identify some areas that do need more material, I'm not opposed to that at all, I just think that we do need to analyze the situation a little more, because as I said, Mr. Kruger, you know, the last time he was out there, he basically said he felt that he had worked it up enough at that time to let it sit through another round of weather, and then go back and, and look at it. Does the commission have any other input? I mean, I think we need to keep an eye on the issue, but I'm not, I, I'm not convinced that there's a way to fix it overnight.
Well, we hired Brendan for his expertise, I think we ought to use it, and let him fix the problem as he sees fit. He knows how to do it, it probably isn't gonna happen overnight, but your best solution gonna be let Brendan fix the road.
Well, I like Steve, if you're, I think you're asking him for more rock, like roadstone rock, right, in certain places. Like he said, well, if it's dry right now, and I know we had half an inch maybe, got muddy, but pretty dry overall the last couple of months. We have roadstone rock, again, it'd be so hard, maybe, they can't blend it, so.
It would sit on top.
Putting that on now isn't gonna help nothing really, until they can get to a situation where the, the road is wet enough, right, then you could maybe uh, do that, or blend it better or something.
The areas where they did put roadstone on it, did improve it substantially.
Well, yeah, rock, obviously.
You can see, it needed, it needed that rock in that, you know, with that clay mixture of supposed gravel.
Clay and sand, yeah, actually, clay, you want some clay, we just had to, we had too much, yeah.
Yeah, it was a hundred percent clay.
I know, I know.
In fact, I ain't too sure it wasn't silt, and silt, I mean, it's just.
But.
It was more of the fines that did it, not the actual roadstone portion of it, it's the fines, the minus two hundred that can attach themselves to the clay base layer and pull it out. We put roadstone because that was what we were able to get easiest at the time, and it would have a little bit of rock material, but roadstone really doesn't have much rock material in it, it's not a spec product, so depending on what pit they're in and how they're changing that up, it can change to being less than ten percent. Three quarter inch to one inch, to thirty percent, three quarter inch to one inch, to I've seen it as low as five percent, one inch to three quarter inch. So it's more because of the minus two hundred sieve size, the dust is what agribankers call it, because that'll bind with the clay the best, it's got the most elopement area for it. It's better than a sand product, because it's so fine, it'll bind with the clay, and when the road dries out, that clay will float out with it, and when it first gets wet again, that water will hit that grizzly clay material, the minus two hundred dust, and it'll wash it off the road into the ditch first. And that'll leave that better crust of road material.
You know, as far as the road shape, you know, the crown and everything, it's, it's had a good crown each time they've done it, but.
So Brendan, do you think there's anything right now we could do to help with this, or do we have to wait till the weather conditions are better so you could do something?
I think it'd be best to wait until we get to the next bit of moisture, I'll make sure that I have it lined up with my projects, we'll put all of our projects to get up there so we can roll the material and pack it, and that'd be the best that can happen to that road. But it's, it's, would be the best for that road, would be allowing that to get wet and being able to roll the material to blend it and pack it with our grid, our big grid roller.
Okay, Steve, we'll wait, try to do that?
We've done it twice, so I guess we'll go three times.
Well, the last time it was too dry for us to actually do it.
It was, I mean, it was absolutely unknowing.
We broke our Rome dish trying to do it, because we wanted to show that we were making an effort on it, that you weren't being ignored.
So right now, I don't think adding more rock will help anything, because what we just said here. You know, you're just gonna put it on top and then it doesn't get a blend with the sand and the clay until it's wet enough to, right? Then you need to blend it with that ridge, ridge packer. So, I don't know what we do right now for you.
I'd thought about, if I got my five thousand dollars back, I'd go to quartzite and start buying rock and hauling it. That's one thing I'd thought of doing, just going buying quartzite rock.
Well, whatever you have to do, I guess. I think that's what we can do for you now.
Well, I guess, you know, we'll see what next rain does and what the next, next little deal does, but.
Yeah, if we can get a rain, and say substantial rain, then maybe they could get out there and address that again with, with that, okay? At least that's my opinion, what do you think?
I'd leave it to Brendan, he's the expert, that's what we hired him for.
Okay.
I believe that we're acknowledging that it's on the list, it's not an emergency at this time, and I think we will continue to address it. But right now, we're coming to the end of the budget here, we have some other things to decide as far as money goes. Mr. Schneider, I'm sorry that you feel you need to spend that money on actual material, but I would hate to see that be done and then it not solve the problem, I think it is kind of a work in progress at this point. We went from not addressing your road at all to this point in time, so I feel like the commission has been addressing it. It's going, it's on the list, but it's not an emergency at this time, that's where I stand. And Mr. McKay, if you would please keep an eye on that and address the issue and find the spots that really need that attention, and maybe we will be adding material. I think it needs a little bit of time to settle too.
Yeah, you know gravel roads, Steve, they take several years to remain yet stable, you know. The first time you gravel anything new, even if you use the best material, good rock and say the perfect blend, and the first two inch rain, that's gonna be a mud hole out there, because if it's not packed out good.
But we've had substantial rain to, rain after rain after rain this year, which.
Well.
And, and you know.
We were creating that road in the middle of summer along with all the rain, so, and we had mostly clay originally, that was not good.
It wasn't, I mean, that was.
I know.
And it messed up Union Drive and, I don't.
It's better now though, right?
It's somewhat better, but there's still some bad spots in, in that mile, even after, I don't know how much money you guys have spent on that mile, a lot.
I know, and we try to please you guys, that's just it, you and Mr. Whacker out there, and we have nine hundred other mi- miles in this county we have to deal with also, you know.
All right.
Thank you.
Okay.
Okay, agenda, we have Mr. Landrum and Mr. Berkey, I believe.
Yeah, come on up, you guys. Hi.
No. How you doing?
All right, how are you?
Good.
Good.
I'm Chris Landrum.
Hi.
Kevin Berkey.
We've met you before, haven't we?
No.
Oh, I thought we didn't.
No, no, sir, um, I actually, I came up last week and I met with Artis down at the, um, your care facility. And she informed me that the commission kind of has a, a voice in how that gets funded, any kind of upgrades, whether it be, um, cameras, nurse call system, that's what we do, our company is INA Alert out of Ellenwood. Um, so in the past, you might have visited with Monty Strecker or Jake Strecker, um, co-owners of the company. But then I came up here, I met with Dawn, and so luckily, we got to come here and introduce ourselves this morning.
Okay.
Yep, Kevin is actually one of our designers, so it was important to bring him today, just in case you guys said, hey, take a look, see what you can do for us as far as if it's just at the care facility, or if you need upgrades here at the county, at the courthouse, then he's here and we can go ahead and get something drawn up for you.
Excuse me, may I ask a question?
Yes, ma'am.
Hi, sorry I'm in remotely, but thanks for accommodating me. Um, would you be the company that has been in contact with Lincoln Park Manor and they received a bid from you for about thirteen thousand? Is this, because we were already given an estimate that there was a bid for the, the call system to be replaced, have you already done a bid?
I, I don't believe so.
Okay, so then we may want a bid from you for their call system, because we had approved doing that for them this year.
I, I think that company, they said they already had a bid for the alliance. I, I was a little caught off guard when he walked in, because it's almost like they sent him to talk to us, and I don't know if that's because of the new administrator, and she's not really sure, because I told her, normally what they do is they get their own bids and then they bring them and present them to you guys. But the question is, is do you want him to go ahead and bid, putting those systems in that.
Yeah, they were talking about the security system for this nursing home, right? That we also are dealing with.
We do nurse call, we do cameras, we do access control.
And you do locks for the doors?
Yep.
Security locks and all that?
The call system's the only thing we agreed we would do this year for about thirteen K, as I recall.
Yeah, so I think that they're probably moving forward with that project, with that company, but. And then while he was here, it was like, okay, so file save was here and you wanted additional bids for the court, or for the courthouse, so I thought, well, maybe they could do bids.
That would be great.
You would do, yeah, we were checking on getting security here for the courthouse to cameras and.
They're going from analog to digital.
Yep.
And all the associated software and hardware.
Yep.
So let's just go ahead and give them the specs of what we were, the basics of what we were getting bid, I believe it was sixteen cameras, correct?
Yes.
Well, up to ten cameras with the, the agreement, and we could expand to sixteen if we needed to. And we thought that perhaps we'd put three of those extra six on the outside entrances.
Well, and when I was talking to him too, I had asked if they were able to do offside, so of those sixteen cameras, if we had nine here in the courthouse, could they do other facilities, and they said that they could, so. I know.
You mean such as the EMS shed or something like that?
Yeah, the EMS shed, the north lot, places where, I think the health department had even kind of inquired, because they were broken into that one time, but, um. Anyways, just, just kind of throwing that out there, but, uh, is it your guys' intentions to do anything at the nursing home? To pay for any security system there, like while they're there, should they?
Uh, I thought we postponed that until next year to discuss and decide what we were gonna do. We agreed on the call system, but the other three things, you had the twenty beds and the cameras and the, uh.
Wonder Guard.
Yeah, Wonder Guard thing, those three, the last three things, we'd agreed not to do anything until next year, budgetary constraints.
Sure.
So I guess we could ask people to start looking at them, as long as it didn't cost us any money right now.
Won't cost you a thing.
I think getting the bids for those things would definitely be appropriate, I know the elopement issue is something that they want to take care of. Um, and so if you could break down your bid individually, you know, one for the call system, I, and they might be moving forward with another company on the call system. But if you would do those separately, as far as changing out the call system or doing the security for the elopement, Wonder Guard, um. That'd be great, but you will have to work with them directly, because they will have to actually bring us multiple bids.
Sure.
As far as you working with the, with the county, I think we're interested in at least seeing what you could do with our camera system, because we are going to be looking to upgrade that here shortly.
Okay.
And we're saying on the twenty bid, you probably don't have to bid on that.
And, uh, if you guys, um, we'll go ahead, all these, we do this no charge. Um, Lyons County Courthouse, we've recently done with cameras and access control. Um, we did the city of Ellsworth and city of Sterling, so if you guys wanna check and see how, you know, your response about our work, so we can definitely do that for you.
We'd certainly be interested in seeing what you propose.
Yeah, and you can do remotely, you're saying, so we have different facilities, different departments? How is that connected through, uh, internet?
Yes.
Why, like you would?
Yeah.
So it'd be video camera connected, and then you could get online here and look remotely at our cameras, say it's Highway Department or wherever.
Yeah.
And then we can even do, if you have somewhere that's remote enough that you don't have internet access, we do have options using wireless radios um, that we can send signal to a, a, a networked point, and that way, everything does come back to one spot, you have one server, and then uh, you have the option of the actual viewing locations that you want.
Those, that would probably be part of your consideration, whether it's too remote, how we'd have to address and all that stuff.
Don, do, does the sheriff's department currently monitor our cameras here at courthouse?
Yes, they do.
They would probably wanna be involved too with that, obviously, because obviously that's their job to monitor all this stuff.
And I tried to catch him last week when I was here, I let him know we'd be back today, um, so hopefully, um, we can get in touch with him also.
Okay.
Drive down the main street at forty miles an hour and you'll visit.
There you go.
Thank you for coming in, I think if you wanted to put that bid together, Dawn has the specifics of knowing, um, how many, what do they call it, like monitoring systems, and then how many cameras? So if you wanna base it on that and then send it in, we can review that.
And also a separate bid for nursing homes, that too.
Presume you'd need to go to the nursing home on the ground, see what the elopement looks like.
We, we had a meeting last week with them and what they were requesting.
Okay.
They may have to talk to you, what, what, you know, they were wanting the new locking doors and that stuff.
Yep, I've visited with Artis for quite a bit, so.
She's the new administrator, right?
Yes, yes, and so. We'll start here, the courthouse, and then we'll get everything we need here, and then we'll head down to Trinity and go from there.
Okay. Any other questions or actions?
Yeah, I just wanted to clarify, when you put your bid together for the county, go ahead and send that to our clerk. But when you put your bid together for the nursing home, go ahead and send that to the administrator.
Yes.
Okay.
All right.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Have you got business cards or something like that, or?
Yeah, we do.
We'd like one of those anyway for Dawn.
Yeah, me too.
I think he loves me one.
Oh, okay, well, then I don't need one, give one to you.
I'll take one, I'll give a lack of one.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Have a good day.
Thank you very much.
Where are you guys based, Ellen?
Ellenwood is the main. Ellenwood is the main office.
Oh, Ellenwood, okay, well, good.
Yes.
Okay, well, thank you for coming.
Definitely.
Yeah.
And then, um. Alright, thank you all, have a good day.
Thank you.
Next on the agenda, we have Highway Department.
There he sits.
So one thing I wanted to bring, this is what all of our new employees read, it's by the Minnesota LTAP, distributed by the Kansas LTAP. It's the local transportation department, it's our resource.
Same thing as this, right, over twenty fifteen?
Yes. So you guys can keep another copy here, if you want. I've got multiples in my office.
Alright, I'll.
Just that way, if you ever question or wondering about what I said, we can both turn to the same page in there and go off something.
Alright, we'll leave it here.
Few of the things that, last week, I talked with CBA, their anhydrous tanks.
Yep.
On auction, they generally go for forty to fifty cents a gallon, so about forty-four to fifty-five hundred.
Yep.
For each one of those tanks over there. The railroad company was eight thousand dollars for a half one. Which they're a little bit bigger, they're about ten foot diameter and not seven, seven and a half foot. And eighteen hundred, or eighteen thousand for a full one. I wanna do a little bit more research before committing to propose, I I spoke with him and he said maybe because he wouldn't have to handle it, and we're local, he could go a little bit less on price from that forty-four to fifty-five hundred.
Yep.
Just, we're concerned, we, as those years those manufactured, the AFNC company, the American Family Car Company. A lot of their tanks were manufactured with a thin outer shell, and then four inches of insulation, and then the inner steel insulation is most likely asbestos. So that would be my concern, and so I wanna do a bit more research with them before we, I suggest.
And I, I had wondered too, those tanks are made to be stressed from the inside out, does it matter if they're stressed from the outside in?
No, there, there, there should still, if it was, if it's one solid piece, it's fine, and it, it's like how most of them were manufactured in those years, forty-two and forty-three. It has a thin sheet steel skin, welded in five or six sections, and then four inches of insulation. What they say for insulation, they didn't go in six, but judging the year, it's most likely asbestos. I feel it, it's probably something we don't want to be messing with.
That'd be more trouble than it's worth, I'd think that'd be a killer.
So I, I, I'll pricing, if we could get all three of them for eleven thousand, I think we'd be ahead if it didn't have the asbestos. We'd still have to pay for a crane twice, once to move it to our north lot, and then we would have to cut them ourselves, fill them with water to neutralize the anhydrous ammonia. And then have to use crane to put them in a position.
Well, Gordon cut the ends off of one one time.
I don't know about that size.
He, he, well, yeah, it's, maybe not, but that's besides.
The smaller ones, yeah, but a lot, a lot, I mean, I've cut the one ends off small tanks before, the little thousand gallon nurse tanks, or pub tanks, if most people call them, make smoke or something.
Yeah.
It's just the bigger size, they're, our plasma cutter can cut half inch thick steel.
Yeah.
And those are generally five eighths minimum, so we would need potentially more tooling, but I wanna do a little bit further research, he didn't get back to me till the end of last week. Next one I had was, I guess, historic in the past, Christmas Eve, the employees worked a half day and had half day, I don't know if it was paid leave, or how it was done, was that something for this Christmas Eve, they were wondering.
Did you guys pool your employees to see if they had leave time? I'd asked Caleb to ask you about that.
No, I don't think we did that today then. There's a lot of people that have leave time left to burn, but not everyone.
So, I called each department and you weren't there, so I'd asked Caleb to let you know, but, um, you guys were supposed to kind of pool your employees and see how many would be affected if they said, we're closing at noon and you have to use your leave time. I, I know there are a couple of new employees that don't have leave time yet to use, like Brendan and Caleb themselves. Most of the employees here in the courthouse said that they were fine with that, but I don't they all have leave time to take.
But I'm, I mean, I'm fine working a full day, Christmas Eve, I just didn't know how it worked out or what the plan was for it.
We were trying to make it a little more uniform, because in years past, um, some of the people who have worked twelve hour shifts or twenty-four hour shifts during the week, they're actually getting additional holiday time or leave time that the other employees, the forty hour week employees aren't getting. So, I, we thought the most appropriate way to be fair would be giving everyone the option, if they wanted to close down the department, then they just use that four hours of leave time, which they have to have used that day anyhow, because we're starting the new pay period after the twenty-sixth, right Dawn?
Correct.
So it kind of gives everybody an option to use that last little bit of leave, because they can only roll over the forty, I mean, the eighty, excuse me? But then it, it makes it a little more fair, because other people, let's just use EMS for, for example, if you were only scheduled to work Sunday and Monday, then you're also getting additional pay on Wednesday, if we give you paid leave on a day that you're not even scheduled to work.
Alright.
So if everyone uses their own leave time, then it kind of makes it a personal responsibility, instead of the county rewarding someone who works a different shift schedule, and then everybody else who works nine to five on Monday through Friday doesn't get that.
Alright, that's fine. Just wanted to make sure I was on the right track, and we had it all squared away before ne- next Monday meeting.
So if they don't have leave, I guess I'll just have to work, huh?
Well, that's the question, do, are they required to work, can they work? You know, there are some church services that I understand start at five thirty or five maybe even.
My suggestion would be, use your leave time, or you can stay home without pay for those four hours. If they're not, if they don't want to work.
Well, since I have to be there for the whole day when they'd be able to come in.
I say the, the question is, is do we close the entire county down, or do we just close down certain aspects?
I think it's up to the department, Dawn, if you and, if you and Hannah have it worked out, that you can put a sign up that says we're closing at noon on the twenty-fourth, and we'll be closed all day on the twenty-fifth, then that's your department.
We're not allowed to do that unless you guys close the courthouse, our offices are supposed to be functioning. Unless you guys agree to close the courthouse, somebody asked a man in each office.
Does everyone in the courthouse have a leave time?
Everybody in the courthouse has leave time.
So maybe we should close the courthouse, but like Brendan's department, he could
Rain open.
Work the extra time or take off without pay.
Yeah.
And obviously EMS has got their own hours that they deal with. And the sheriff's department also.
The sheriff's department and the EMS are not closing, we know that.
No, sheriff's department isn't calling any of them.
The health department said that they would be okay, the landfill said that they would be okay with using leave time. All of those employees have leave time, it's the highway department that doesn't, now, of course, they get off at four o'clock too, so. Oh, yeah, that's right, because you're on ten hour days, sorry. I forgot.
Well, how many people were in the highway department that don't have leave, just?
At least two of us, two of us, we, we don't, we're not eligible for it, but there, there's a few others that may not have any time.
Oh, yeah. Well, maybe we should just ask your department.
Okay.
What they wanna do.
Okay.
Either use leave time.
I say leave it open, because I have to be there, because I don't have leave time.
And the other ones, if they wanna use leave time, okay, if they want to not get paid, because they don't have enough leave time, that's my opinion.
Okay.
Or is that okay, work out with you?
So, do you wanna make a motion that?
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay, go ahead.
I move to approve closing the courthouse, the health department, and the landfill with noxious weed for a half a day on Christmas Eve.
I second that motion.
So under the discussion portion, then, it's understood that the highway department is under Brendan's um, supervision, that they will do what they need to do to be open that day with whatever crew that they determine. The rest of it is out of our control, because EMS will still have their shifts, and so will the sheriff's department, any other questions?
I'm just gonna put a note on there, the employees in those departments will be using leave time, so.
Have, hey, they have agreed to use leave time, how about that?
Okay.
Okay. Any further discussion? Those in favor vote aye.
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 No opposition, motion carries.
Alright, and then there's a stone culvert on Iron and Sixtieth, just south of Sylvan. I looked into it, the drainage area is under two square miles, so it, and there is no known endangered species. So we can place similar sized tube, if there's no history of overtopping. But in order to make sure we are placing, because it's a half culvert, not a full tube, it's five feet by eight feet. It may be overdesigned. Can I have permission to have Kirk and Michael run hydraulics on it to make sure, if it was designed for a twenty-five year storm, we'd go with a smaller tube, but if it's designed only for a five year storm, we would not, we would wanna go that size, if not bigger, if we're gonna be fixing it. There's three of the keystones that have started to fall out of it. Well, one is actually falling out completely, two of the other keystones behind it are loose, because there's no ground left in them.
Where is this again?
On Sixtieth and Iron, south of Sylvan.
So you're gonna have a technical expert come in and do a hydraulic survey?
They, it's gonna be a couple of hours to do hydraulics on their end, I already got them the measurements, we've done the drainage.
Is that under the highway?
No, it's, uh, just if you take the blacktop, the first road going east outside of Sylvan on the south side. Trying to remember, I can't remember the.
That's where that?
No, we're ironizing, but isn't Sixtieth the blacktop?
It's just past that, that, that was the closest intersection. We redid, there was a stone arch bridge there.
It's on iron, but it's on, not under the highway, it's.
Correct.
Okay, I understand.
Is it west of the high?
It, it is east of.
East of it, okay.
East of the highway.
Okay.
There was a stone arch bridge there to the west of this location that was replaced. The abutments were redone, it was added a black concrete deck across to it years ago. I guess, and this is just further down the line, there's a stone culvert.
I think you should do your hydraulic survey and then use best engineering judgment to fix it.
Do you have any idea what that costs?
It'd be under a thousand dollars for having them do the study, it'd just be a few, he said it'd be a couple hours.
Yeah.
So with all, all the other information already given to them, like the surveying was six hundred dollars for the three, four hours out there and the drawing work, I expect this to be similar. He said, we could just put in a tube we thought was close, but I think it'd be better to fix it right the first time, so we don't have to go back to it. And then Verizon contacted us and I met with them last Thursday for the GPS and it put me in tracking. They came together with three different quotes, based on different numbers of machinery. So if we went with the base one, which is what we have currently, it would be, oh, I think it's, I left my scratch paper with the actual notes on it, at my office. If we went with the base model, which we just paired apples to apples with what we currently have with GPS Insight, this is four hundred and eighty dollars a month versus the twenty-three hundred a quarter we have with GPS Insight. So a couple hundred dollars difference. Basically, if we went all the way up to everything and anything tracked, forty-two options and step twenty-six, it would be like three dollars a month less. I told them I'd like to do a little bit more investigation, because theirs is based on cellphone signal. And that's how it's uploaded, I don't know if GPS Insight is also based on the cell network. Because my concern would be, based on the cell network, we have lots of areas with poor coverage in this county. So I, I wanna make sure, and they don't have a, I asked them if they did a demo model, where we could try one out in one of our areas that doesn't have good reception. And he said, no, it's basically, it's month to month as it is, so you can purchase one unit and give it a shot and see how it is. But I wanna check on our GPS Insight to see if it is also based off the cell network. And if that one works how it does, this would work as well, and it'd be a lower cost option for us.
Check if it's coming visiting.
That, I was, I asked, we had, could just get one unit to demo, if they do a demo, and he said, no, we don't do demos, but I've got a call in, I'm waiting for a call back from Hutchinson, they had purchased six units for their highway department and public works department, and ran them for six months, and then just switched their whole system over to it, so. And then OS sixty-five, we had talked about with Tanner when he was here last, about that steel structure in the center. So we were able to find, once it was done, the fracture critical loads, we were able to get that report, all a hundred and sixty-two pages of it. And going through that, we found that steel truss portion in the center, it would be posted twenty-seven tons, forty-three tons, forty-three tons, so twenty-seven tons for single axles.
Yeah.
Little dump trucks, and then forty-three, forty-three for the larger fire engine, things like that. But he said, some of the, if the county is replacing it, we need to really look at structure number one, because that abutment number one has a crack going through the entire abutment. So it's not just as simple as changing out those timber structure spans to upgraded steel spans, we would also probably need to redo one full abutment.
So that's our weak point right now, then, the east abutment?
Well, the wea- the weakest point is the timber structure.
Yeah, yeah, I mean, yeah.
So if we went to steel spans and, I mean, just rough numbers, you're looking at three hundred thousand to replace those with steel spans, plus a new abutment or repairs to that abutment. Just with a number that would be somewhere close in there, it'd be about three hundred thousand, if not more. Talking with Tanner on that.
For that abutment itself?
Goodness, for the entire span. For the spans, that's with current pricing on steel, using our labor and our man, manpower, it would be about three hundred thousand out of pocket cost for us.
That was OS sixty-five.
Yes ma'am. So do you want us to keep looking into that? Since that steel portion is good there, and see if maybe we apply for, if, for one of the local bridge improvement projects, like we did for over here?
Well, yeah, if we're gonna fix it, I think we need to pursue that some more and see what else you can. That's a lot of money, but if it's gotta be done, it's gotta be done.
That's sixty-five, right, OS sixty-five?
That's sixty-five, yeah.
And can you tell me, what was the rating again?
Twenty-seven tons, forty-three, forty-three, so it's considered a three sign limit, or you can have it just posted twenty-seven tons. So the twenty-seven ton is for, like your dump trucks, and then your trucks and trailers are forty-three, forty-three. Basically, the special unit seven, which is seven axle truck, is the one that controls it to be in the twenty-seven tons. So things have changed a lot over the time, and that special unit seven is the one that's affecting a lot of bridges and things like that. When we had our bridge report done, just this past, back in October, I had to purchase eight signs with this three truck sign limit, so that way we can keep legal loads for trucks and trailers on there. Just basically to mark for that SU seven truck.
Okay, so I'm still a little confused on that one, then, that, that actually changes the?
No, so basically, what it's saying is, if we replace, if the abutment was fine, there's no problems with the abutment, and we replaced all the timber spans, those four timber spans, with upgraded steel spans and all of that, the bridge would be twenty-seven tons for a single axle, for a dump truck, and then forty-three tons, forty-three tons for the majority of everything else.
And you're saying that the replacement of the spans is the three hundred thousand estimate?
Yes.
But we're also gonna have to do something with that abutment.
Yes.
If we agree to this, that'd be one, you'd put a grant in for it, it'd be.
Well, we could do it, what we could do, like, like I talked with Tanner on it, they didn't apply for it, because it wasn't in as bad of shape as they originally thought. That's why they had applied for the KLVIP for this bridge over here off, off of Two Twentieth, right by the old Amber Town site. But he said, going forward, this would be a good candidate to apply for that KLVIP, so we could have a, the state share portion of the bridge. They would help, if it gets approved and selected for it, they would help cost share the project, so it wouldn't be three hundred thousand out of our pocket. It would be less out of our pocket in the state.
Be like eighty percent they'd pay for, right, if we do the twenty?
We're still looking at two years before we do anything of the bridge.
Right, but it's been like that for quite a few years too.
Yeah, I understand that.
Now, we have quite a, there's other bridges too that are
Yes.
in a similar situation, I'm not against this.
And we, and we can, we can submit more than one too.
Yeah, I'm not against this, it's just, we have a lot.
When is deadline?
Many more too.
Yeah.
When is the deadline to submit that?
That's not until the start of the next year, they just finished the process of it this past year. Oh, back, we got approval for the one here in October, and November, I believe it's not until February is when it is submitted. Tanner said, when he came out next, we're gonna talk more about it.
Okay.
That, or that might have been the High Risk rural roads, and the KLVIP is not submitted until, uh, August.
Okay.
So I got a bit of a head cold, so I'm breaking a little swimmer right now. And then. Wilson Lake Estates, we were out there this past week fixing the drainage issues on the roads, and, uh, there was a company doing work digging out the center of the roadway. Did we know if they ever filed a permit with us, or my concern is that if-
Who was it?
I, I don't know, all I know is they hit a fiber line, 'cause I met with a gentleman from Wilson at Wilson Communications on Fiftyth and Bison, and we left, 'cause he had a call, and we ended up following each other up there. Because the people that were doing the work in the roadway-
Where was this at?
Just to the west of where that landslide was. Right. Basically, from that new house construction, that road that goes down to where the landslide is,
Oh, yeah.
they were digging up the center of the road, they're, I don't know, replacing waterline or something, but apparently they hit a fiber line. And I didn't know if, well, if this is our road, it should have a permit with us.
Well, we've never determined all that, with, you know, what, what's our responsibility, what isn't.
Okay.
We need to someday, I guess. And what's the deal with the house on the hill, are they still?
They're still working, I don't mind.
And we're not going to worry about the water drain off? Remember, you had some concern about the water rushing back-
We'll, we'll run it a quarter there, but, yeah.
And that could cause a, that could cause a landslide on that south, south and eastern.
And we, we can run a culvert to help with that. It's just more that if we spend all this time and money to fix these roads, I mean, they just had Mackos. How smoothly are they gonna get that road surface back? We should be made aware if they're gonna be doing something, so we can put up traffic control systems to keep the public safe.
Well, the association is supposed to approve that in advance, it says in their bylaws, I wonder if they did, maybe.
I would like to make a suggestion, I think we need to send an official letter from the commission to the Wilson Lake Housing Association, and, um, describe our intent to maintain the public access there. And we understand that there is limited right-of-way due to the nature of how things were constructed, so we will do it to the best of our abilities, but any disturbance of the public right-of-way over the road needs to be brought before the commission. Whether or not the association has their own bylaws, doesn't
Yeah.
really negate their obligation to inform us.
Because where that landslide was, that culvert collapsed, because the utility company doing work in there entrenched through the culvert and collapsed. And if county would have been made aware of that, this whole issue could have, the landslide could have never happened.
Right, right, if we're gonna be responsible for things like the landslide, then we have to have a say-so on how things are built and the roads are taken care of,
That was my-
and all of that stuff, yeah.
I presume the association would have directed that repair out there. You couldn't just walk in off the street, I guess, and do that.
Because they had a fiber line, I don't know, I don't know what they did. A fiber line's not something you can just patch and throw back in the ground.
Well, I understand that.
It's, it's a full replace, so I hope they would have done one call, but the way stuff's been done out there, I don't know. And that's what's concerning to me, that they've got a whole section of the road dug, they're digging it with multiple pieces of equipment. They never contacted, for my, my, they never contacted my department, or it seems like anyone here, with their intent.
I, I just wondered if they contacted the association out there.
I don't know.
Well, that's something we maybe need to, like Alexis said-
Send a letter.
Send a letter to them.
If we are responsible for those roadways, we need to be made aware when they're doing stuff, it's in our right-of-way.
And we talked about-
Not that they can't do that, because utilities companies have a, a right to work in our right-of-way. Just that we have to be made aware, so we can place traffic control measures to keep the public safe.
And we talked before, too, when we were, were talking about the landslide issue before, we should maybe have a meeting with this association and us, and decide, okay, here's what we are responsible for, what we want from you guys. In other words, some procedures or processes on how to deal with all that stuff up there. So we just don't have some guy out digging out in the middle of the road for some reason, we have no control over.
Well, and then the last thing I had was a plate compactor for the mini excavator that we have. Uh, Bobcat in Salina was not willing to provide a quote, because he said he's not gonna be competitive as White Star was, so he was unwilling to do that. I al, we also contacted United Rentals, they have a used unit for thirty, so the one from White Star is forty-five hundred, just under. The one from United Rentals is a used unit, it is thirty-five hundred, the gentleman thought, but it would take some modification to make it work. Whereas this would be bolt-on. Yeah, this would be a brand-new implement for it, we do not have a plate compactor for the mini excavator.
How much is the new one?
Forty-five hundred and fifty-three, right here.
Oh, okay, I thought that was a used one.
Thirty-five hundred plus getting it fixed, and you're gonna be up in this range anyway, so you might as well get a new one then.
Yeah, it's just, we couldn't get any, we, we tried Salina, Bobcat, because White Star is Bobcat as well. But Salina, Bobcat is not White Star, and he said he was, he was unwilling to provide a price for it. Because the machine is Bobcat, we're trying to compare what would work on it. United Rentals, they sometimes sell new units, they didn't have any, they had a used unit that the gentleman thought it would go, he'd sell it for thirty-five hundred. But looking at mounting brackets and everything, we would have to have it taken to a machine shop to make an adapter, so it would work with our equipment.
So you're recommending buying this?
Yes.
I suspect you did due diligence on getting bid, so I would go with this forty-four fifty-three personally.
Alexis, I don't know if you were involved in the discussion here, uh, about Brennan's looking at a new, a new plate compactor, uh-
So we do not have one for our mini excavator, we have one for the large John Deere, but that large John Deere excavator is down at the moment. And it, it's been too unwieldy in certain areas and applications, whereas this would be, for the tight areas, small areas would be the best option.
Okay. And, uh, the bid's forty-five, forty-four fifty-three, and I kinda agree with Jim, I think we should probably go ahead, too, with this new one. Since the, the fixing, the other one was, what, three thousand something?
Well, it's thirty-five hundred with unknown history on it, and it wouldn't have to take machine shop work in order to adapt to our machine. And this will work for an E thirty-five and an E sixty-five, which is the next size bigger that we had talked at one point about potentially upgrading to. It would work with either machine size.
So you brought us thirty-five hundred for a repair, thirty-four for a purchase?
Thirty-five, thirty-five hundred for, it'd be thirty-five hundred for a used model that would need potentially some repairs, but also machine work, so it would work with our machine. For forty-four fifty-three and sixty cents for a brand-new unit that would go right onto our machine.
From where is the new one?
Bob, White Star Machinery.
Did you get other bids from other places?
We tried with Salina, Bobcat, and they were unwilling to, no. And that's, for Bobcat dealers, that's all there is.
Okay.
We, I tried United Rentals, they didn't have a, a new unit, it was just the one used unit they had, they thought they could sell for thirty-five hundred.
You have enough budget, in your budget this year, enough funds?
With the capital expenses area, yes, we can cover that.
I would say that-
I have a problem with that, if you, if you did attempt to get another bid, I mean, I would, I'd see the benefit-
We did, and that's why, that's why, yeah, that's why we had called United Rental, because I didn't feel comfortable coming to the commission with just one bid and one bid alone, regardless of someone not wanting to supply a bid.
Yeah. I say go ahead with it, in my opinion.
Okay. And that was all that I had on my list, was anything that you guys had?
Any new, uh, information on the, uh, Spillman Creek, uh, One-fiftieth issue, this valley?
So I spoke with, I spoke with, uh, the gas company again, late last week. He said he needed a few more days to talk this operations to see, but they're leaning towards the middle of the three options, where we, instead of going to the gap in the trees and going right alongside the roadway, with the middle option. That's something he was gonna talk with, further with his operations about, to see if they can encase their line and give us that cost, but that's the one he was leaning towards them accepting with and going with. He just wanted to confirm that we would make sure that the lines were in that depth under the roadway, and that if they needed to, just like any other utility company, they could access their lines. I explained then that, yes, you just have to contact us beforehand, so you can set traffic control measures.
As of this morning, Mr. Sheldon was still in agreement with the middle route.
Okay.
I would like to know if you have a brief overview update of where we are to end this year's budget.
Um, once I get my, the November balance back, I should be able to give that to you next week.
Okay, okay, fine.
That should have done this week, shouldn't it, though? Yep.
That's fine. Just by the end of the year, a kinda like a rundown to see where the expenses are and what your planning is for them, and how that's gonna roll over into next year, and what purchases we may be doing.
Will be.
Thank you.
Anything else?
Did you have a good chance to give Mr. Minnicky over there?
No, I have not, yeah, I tried calling him.
Sometime.
Do you have his number again, if you can try and read it?
Yeah, sometime, I'll get with you, I'll call him. It's not it, it's just I want to-
Yeah, I left a voicemail, and I did not get a return call, so if, maybe I have the wrong number?
Well, I'll get with you again, Brennan.
Okay.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next on the agenda, we have Mr. McKinney from our central regional planning mission.
I wanna take a three-minute recess, okay?
Sure, we have ten minutes till he technically is on, so we're good.
All right.
I wanna go help.
You gonna help, Randy?
Yeah.
Yeah, we need coming in there.
And Alexis, Tim Meyer, Tim Meyer came from our committee, and Emily Benedict from our office, she's my assistant executive director.
Hello.
She knows me.
You know each other?
Yeah.
Don't say unfortunately.
I'll be quiet.
Tim's gonna be an introvert for a little bit. He said Alexis is over there.
Thank you.
So are you looking through that camera of the laptop, or this one here?
No, I'm, I'm just on Skype, so it's just through the cam, through the laptop.
Okay, through the laptop, all right. Well, if I show images to help you, then I'll just lift them up. Well, for example, this is the study.
Okay.
The report that we're dialoguing a little bit about today.
Okay. Thank you.
I don't know if you can see it in front of your desk or not.
I can see where you put it.
Yeah.
Yeah, thank you.
Yeah. That's what we promised, I don't know, a year and something to go.
Yeah.
We'd be back.
Oh, is that light map, or the, the airline, the airway map?
Yeah, the corridor that Fort Riley has right now.
Huh, is the L shape just for to increase distance, or what is the-
Well, it does decrease distance, but it's largely because it avoids commercial traffic by using that route. And it's, it's partially where the corridor ends up.
We got that, too, that part of the deal.
Yeah, that's what I had, that, yeah, you keep that.
Yeah, can I have it, okay.
That's the excerpts from Lincoln County, or regarding Lincoln County, so. But the L shape is largely because of where it is ending up at the weapons range. Now, it just ends up in that corner, that's where they want to be anyhow, because of certain facilities up there, south of Brookville. Well, also, I might just start with, how are things going with the architect on historic preservation? The architect that you had chosen a few weeks ago?
I haven't heard anything, have you?
They're gonna send us a contract.
Okay. So they are interested, the, the kind of the, still as anticipated, wanting to get going to respond, that's good. Well, on this particular item, if you're ready to roll, this is the unmanned aircraft system project related to Fort Riley, U.S. Department of Army corridor, which is called Route Phoenix. And the corridor, as initially blessed by Federal Aviation Administration, is about two thousand feet up in the air normally, from Wakefield area, if you know where Wakefield is, northwest Clay, uh, Clay County, all the way over to Beverly area in Lincoln County, and then it jumps south. And again, for Alexis, this is the path, the L shape. This is just right inside the maps section. And that, that works there, too, that's a smaller map, but
Boards of backs.
But if you know where Tim Meyer lives, he's right underneath of it, and that's why Tim is on the committee. When this project was set up back in the summer of two thousand eighteen, our board blessed the interest from each county in the corridor, and then even another one from the periphery to beyond the Joint Land Use Study Committee. Because the project, from Fort Riley's funding perspective, it's U.S. Department of Defense.
If you find page sixty, there's no page number on it, but it's just a couple pages past page sixty.
Well-
There, you're pretty much there.
The committee has David Thurlow, county commissioner from Clay County, who lives just south of the, the corridor. It also has Don Wolf from Ottawa County. It had another person before Don, but Don has been the most active from that county, Ottawa County. She's on the committee, she lives in the Bennington area. And then Tim Meyer from Lincoln County is on the committee. And then in Ellsworth County, Kermit Rush has been on the committee, he's the county commissioner down there. Monty Shadwick has been on the committee, but he's only participated distance or by remote from Celine County, but also Colonel Caraway from K-State Polytech has been on the committee. And Lauren Driscoll from the city of Salina, she just participated early on in the process, because her husband had been involved with a military joint land use study process when they lived in Alaska, and he was working for U.S. Army at that time. And we've had probably a couple of others participate from around the region, peripheral. While Craig Chamberlain, who lives in the very northern part of Dickinson County, has seen some of this training activity take place in that part of the world, mostly from the commercial or the large aircraft side up where he lives. And then we've had a couple of Fort Riley representatives participate in the committee, Kelly Pascal, who's a public relations person, and Troy Mattingly, who is the unmanned aircraft system coordinator. He has participated either remotely or in person, just to answer questions. Well, in short, it's about four years old, I'm testing my memory, that Fort Riley has been training, testing, on base with unmanned aircraft systems. It's probably been more public the last couple of years, because the corridor was blessed through an early study that we were involved with, just to maybe look at, well, just for public purposes. And we did that one probably two thousand fifteen, sixteen, just interactions, to get letters from the various boards of commissioners, just to say, yep, we're okay with this kind of research going on way up in the sky. Because generally, these items, these unmanned aircraft, of which you can see two on the front page, they're flying two thousand to five thousand feet up in the air, that's fairly high, so.
And what did they do from us, just to-
Well-
something agrees, say we, we say it's okay?
The FAA required the first little study, just to bless the corridor existence, like it is. And since that time, there's been some practicing, I don't know how often you might have noticed practicing to take place, but they have to be accompanied by helicopters, even at four thousand, five thousand feet in the air, with the Gray Eagle, which is the large one, it's the size of a crop duster type plane. The objective, the hope is, down the road, they'll be able to practice with that same Gray Eagle or a mid-size, it's probably as wide as this table in size, uh, called the Raven. And to practice with that one, they still need the helicopters, but they'd like to have both of them doing their training mission between Smoky Hill Weapons Range and Fort Riley without the accompanying helicopters. It just saves fuel, saves efforts, but they'd still have to communicate. Question?
Does Smoky Hill Weapons Range, is that, who owns that?
United States government owns that. It's, it's kind of a cooperative type-
Department of Defense, probably.
Yeah. It's a cooperative arrangement, 'cause Kansas National Guard has facilities, Kansas Crisis Center is there, and there's online security practicings take place out there. And that's the adjutant general's office here in the state with emergency management.
There's a Canadian liaison officer involved, too.
Okay. And there are other endeavors where the Air Force, the Army, and Marines, I understand, can practice there. I don't know about any Navy aviation kind of thing.
They've had some major tra, uh, training sessions out there,
Yeah.
where people came from all the United States.
But it's just south of Brookville, it's west of Salina Airport, and of course, north of Marquette, McCursin County, but-
But the Canadians do fly F-sixteens down here.
But the Canadians do fly F-16s down here on invitation.
Yeah. And there's several Air Force bases that visit from afar. It's a unique facility for central part of the United States, too.
Now, this K-State to Poly, which is K-State Salina, they have like a education, part of their curriculum is drones and stuff, right? So are they involved with the military on that?
Probably.
Yeah.
And that's why we had Colonel Caraway on our committee for some insight and feedback type process because he's the head of that for K-State Polytech, that program. Well, this particular project, which isn't the last one, that's sort of what we'll get to, but this one was land use related, and that's why there's so many maps towards the back, just everything that Appraiser's Office has about land use and other things that needed to be verified and visited. But it's essentially identifying land use that can, oh, not so much conflict, but just make Fort Riley aware of what's out there. And this one, for example, which I'll hold up for Alexis, it's showing the corridor in the border, the barrier area. And again, we're talking 2,000, 5,000 feet in the air for these guys to practice, maybe twice a week most of the year, but I'd say six months out of the year at the most. Because they get deployed, they're doing things. Had one shot down over the Middle East not long ago, so that cost.
Well, we've been using them over there for taking out bad guys.
Longer than you know.
Oh, yeah. I have a...
This part here, which is going a little bit over Beverly, from the Tim Meyer Zone all the way south towards Carnero.
It goes right over Westfall, too.
Yeah. Well, that's the corridor zone, and they have to stay within that. That's about a five miles, four nautical miles, but about a five-mile-wide area. And it is truly for their practicing from the base, going down to Smoky Hill Weapons Range to practice down there and interact with other land use type things. Their surveillance is practiced, they practice other activities.
Is there any liability agreement? Say one of those crashed and damaged some farmhouse. Is there any liability issue involved?
There should be for them, yes, because that did happen near Craig Chamberlain's in Dickinson County with the little small guy that's a shoulder mount type process that veered off and came down. Now, it might have hit a couple cornstalks, and that was it.
Right.
But if it would have hit somebody's windshield, yeah, they'd be liable.
Or the house or the barn.
Just like if you or I were doing something and we visited Mr. Gableton's, Gableman's place or hurt somebody else's property.
Right.
Yep, we'd have liability for that. And that sort of segues, even though it jumps a little bit, segues into what is what I call an implementation project that Fort Riley has recommended to the committee, and the committee's recommended to our board to accept this study. And then it's up to each county if they want to go forward with what I call a regional implementation type project. Department of Defense, a couple weeks ago, told us in Manhattan that they would be willing to fund 90% of it, with the other 10% could be in-kind match efforts through some of research and Appraiser Offices. And those were the handouts that I gave you or dropped off previously in preparation for today's meeting. Well, they're also in this book on page 53, 54, 55.
What's the funding for?
The funding is to pay for various activities in here. So let's turn to page 53.
In here?
Yeah, and you have it there, but it's also in your study, Randy.
Okay.
Right here, so if you want to see it that way. And you guys, these are yours, so you can mark them up and do things with. But 53 is section 4.2.5.
Lincoln County.
Yeah, Lincoln County. And, well, I won't read all of them, but we'll just highlight some. The funding can help with implementing anything in here that you want, and it's certainly coming from the Fort Riley perspective because they've already been blessed to use this corridor. They like to have unmanned, well, they are unmanned aerial systems, but they'd like to have it where they don't have to have their helicopters out hovering over bothering cattle or sheep or some other livestock kind of things because those have to be low in the ground. They'd like to do it remotely as much as possible, have that confidence. In reality, they'd like to practice all the way to Fort Carson, Colorado. They, Fort Riley wants to be the number-one unmanned aircraft training site, just like K-State Polytech is gearing up to be that for university work. And they do have a lot of enrollment. There's at least one student from Lincoln County that's in the program at K-State Polytech. Well, Fort Riley only has maybe a dozen or sixteen. It's not a whole lot of soldiers doing this kind of work, but they want to be the number-one trainer of operators, pilots and such, navigators, for this kind of endeavor, so...
I see here...
They're making these suggestions that you have. So do you want to start at the first one, Randy, 4.2.5?
Yeah, well, I just reading out through it. I see Fort Riley wants to be involved if we would have any future development of wind turbine.
Yeah, yeah, best one.
And we are going to repower supposedly next year. Where are they going to, you know, modify with our existing wind towers, it's two phases. Would they want to be involved in that?
Well, it wouldn't hurt
Operation.
Because where it goes south, south of Westfall into Ellsworth County, it's right on the edge of the wind farm, right on the edge.
Wind farm, yeah.
So it's more for Ellsworth County considerations. But again, it's their request of this. You don't have to take any of these, you don't have to do any of these. But if you want to, here's the suggested doings.
Okay.
And, yeah, there's some cost.
May I ask something before you go into that breakdown of what they want to propose funding for? You know, it's my understanding that it's public airway above, you know, above a certain height. I don't know what that is, but is there compensation? And I knew this program was going on. I at first attended a couple meetings of the Central Regional Planning Commission and never followed up on that because we decided it would be better for economic development to get involved with that group. But what, you know, what kind of compensation does the county get for the use of basically airways that belong to the people who live under them?
It's just like commercial traffic or crop dusters, folks like that. It's the same FAA governance and procedures.
But we don't get any funding from the crop dusters.
Actually, it's public property. I think anything else of a certain foot is considered public property. Has that not ever been discussed with these programs? They're not discussing compensation, they just want us to invest in more procedures or?
Yeah, that's not been discussed.
I think if we were a major pathway through, we might...
And you are. The map for commercial, I don't think, is in here. We had it at the beginning, but there's a lot of layers of air traffic that's blessed, such as coming out of Salina, going to Denver, or going from Albuquerque to Chicago. There's different layers where they're supposed to be flying. Well, from Salina to Denver, it's sort of the medium height because they don't have to go up too high to get...
To Kansas City to Denver, probably.
Yeah, yeah, same thing. Coming across here, well, for crop dusters, there's not really a specific corridor. They just have to avoid certain things. And obviously, they're avoiding things that are just 100 feet in the sky, such as wind farm, wind turbines, and that sort of stuff. What else would be flying? Well, you could have, and that's part of what these recommendations are. You could have private folks using their drones just to observe their own farms and/or visiting other things. Well, engineering firms like a Kirk &amp; Michael or a Lochner, they also use drones to investigate certain structure type issues. Insurance companies use them as well. And the county could make use of them, probably contracting. But I know of four counties that have at least one on staff, let's say, to visit bridges. And that's what they're supposed to be used for. FAA is pretty strict. There's penalties if they get off track.
For sure.
If those drones are used for visiting other places. That farmer is supposed to use it for his farm only and not use it for the neighbors. Now, unless the neighbor gives permission, type thing. But for Fort Riley, that's why they have to stick in this corridor.
Like now, if they're flying, say they're flying, they're, I don't know how high you said, 2,000 to 5,000 feet. Do they have to notify our crop dusters like Clay Herring that, hey, we're going to be flying over Beverly tomorrow at 6 o'clock in the, 8:00 in the morning? Don't be crop dusting there, we might run into you. Or some guy in drones could be flying around there, too.
What's being communicated in all these gatherings, we did have crop dusters involved, and they don't get that high. They stay low, and they have to notify, just like Fort Riley does, any kind of air traffic control that they're going near. They notify, they have to file a plan, I call it. Let's say if they're going to practice at 9:00 this morning.
Flight plan.
Then they have to say, okay, they have to tell these folks, like in Minneapolis.
Well, a lot of military, a lot of military bases, and Jim knows that, they have restricted flight area zones where the commercial planes cannot fly in that area, like an Air Force Base or something.
And that's the...
And we're kind of being used as that a little bit here, aren't we? Kind of a restricted flight zone for these drones, right?
Well, I mean, this is the only corridor they can be in, and that overlay map does show that. That's not in this, and I didn't bring the first one, which was, well, over a year ago. It would have had that in there, which was really a proposed level. But it does show that. And it's mostly around Salina because there is so much in-and-out traffic down there.
Right, right. We have a fine airport there. They have a lot of military stuff coming in and out there, testing and training.
And that's, again, back to the L shape. That's why the L shape, it ends up at Smoky Hill Weapons Range.
Right.
To get around all that.
At the west.
Lower populated areas.
Yeah.
Well, if we're lower populated, you don't have the restrictions like you do with more populated.
Right. It just avoids conflict. It avoids, I would call, kind of radar control type issues. Same thing on coming through the wind farms because those have remote control operations. And just to avoiding things there, it's the path they choose. And again, it's not very often, but these are fairly expensive toys or tools.
Oh, yeah.
And they don't want anything to happen to them, even though they don't practice all that much. If they're practicing once a month with the Gray Eagles, that's a million-dollar type aircraft, and they want to take care of it because it's highly relied upon elsewhere where it's used.
I notice they're making a major maneuver in Lincoln County. They're turning left real sharp. Instead of going straight west or southwest, they're turning sharply, which is probably okay, but that's a, you know, anytime you got a major maneuver, that's a possibility of something happening there.
It's not as the crow flies.
Yeah.
Well, again, back on page 53, that's the beginning of the regulations or procedures that are recommended. And some of these you could choose to go with or none, or you could choose to look at all of them. We're just making the communication because the study's done, that grant period is wrapped up, and now an implementation grant will go in in January. Clay County wants to update their comprehensive plan process. They haven't done something for 15 years. And that would cost some dollars for professional help or NCRPC to help them update that. Ottawa County wants to update theirs, but they don't need much updated. But they would also include some of the recommendations, like you have, to accommodate or consider things such as wind farm development or solar farm development kinds of things, or some other dark sky kind of policies which are listed on top of page 54 of yours. Those are what Fort Riley would support or suggest having in the comprehensive plans. Well, Lincoln County has had a comprehensive plan. It was 1989, 90 that our office helped with, but that is old stuff. Needs to be updated if it's going to be. If you want to include some of these things or just some others in general. But if you don't want to do what I'd call a more intensive comprehensive plan, you could look at some of these other policies that would be outside of a comprehensive plan, that could be some guidelines or some procedures. And if you want to read through these, we can. Or if you want to look at them and study them, we can. But in reality, by late this month, we need to get our budget in and have some of these things listed for the other counties. Ellsworth County is anticipating doing another comprehensive plan. They're kind of in the same timeframe as Lincoln County. They haven't done one for 30 years now, and they'd like to update and do theirs while they're at it. And they want to do some considerations of the unmanned aircraft as part of that, too. Maybe not all of them, but a few of these different procedures. But what are recommended here from Fort Riley's perspective are land use related. Those are the tougher things. Then there's coordination recommendations, which you kind of alluded to. It's communication, and it's notifying Fort Riley if there's activity happening just in case they're planning to practice intensely, 2,000 feet, 4,000 feet in the sky. If Lincoln County knows of some of that kind of potential interference happening, well, let Fort Riley know. And there is a certain person over there that could be notified.
I'm sorry, am I understanding that this is us signing ourselves up to make sure that we're liable to notify them? Shouldn't it be them notifying us in our face?
That could be the policy that you set up. It could be that we're, Lincoln County asked Fort Riley to contact Lincoln County. You have something and a certain person designated that gets notified in Lincoln County. So one way or the other, it's a coordination recommendation.
Tim, you've been working on this stuff. Are you like the coordinator of this now with them?
I don't know what I am.
He's on the committee, but this is the first time we've really talked about this kind of in depth.
What have you just talked about in your committee, Tim? Nothing really yet?
Well, we've gone over this thing a couple times, part of it.
Do you have any recommendations or anything?
Well, I think, like she said, the best, it'd be a lot simpler if Fort Riley would notify Lincoln County when they're flying. They have to do it with the FFA anyhow.
Yeah, FAA.
Yeah, the FAA.
And it could be both ways. If Lincoln County knows of something, like say a 4th of July fireworks celebration that's happening right in that, well, you could notify Fort Riley because those will go up a few feet, fireworks.
Yeah.
I doubt if they'll be practicing during 4th of July. Usually, they take that off.
I guess I'd like to see Lincoln County be compensated, Mr. Commissioners. I mean, if we're going to continue and this is going to become this big project and they're willing to do 90% funding for certain things, you know, why are we just basically making ourselves vulnerable and them using our airspace that they're will if we're not going to claim to public domain over it? It's my understanding that the public owns anything above, I want to say, like 500 feet.
I asked that question at Fort Riley. Who owns that airspace above my property and they informed it wasn't me? The FFA controls that.
Well, I think the FFA determines that it's private for so many feet up, like 100 feet up above your own airspace is private to your property. And then there's a gap, and then above 500 feet, I think it's 500 feet, that's actually public domain, which is, you know, everybody's been using it for free. But if we're going to basically escort a military operation to happen over top of our heads, I don't see why we can't be compensated when they're expending money just to do it in the first place. Maybe we need to put that in the contrast and see if they like that, or they can find a new route.
You can sure inquire.
Any idea on what, how much money's involved in this funding? What would be a, you know, a guess on the budget here or whatever we're doing?
Oh, I would say in the 20,000 range on these policies procedures, if you wanted to do everything that they're recommending here. Something like that.
I have a technical question.
Uh-huh.
What's education recommendation one?
I noticed that, too. I think that might be a typo.
Educate the public on the potential dangers of flying drones in and around the corridor.
That's two.
Oh, okay. Develop and distribute information property owners.
That's three.
That's three. I think it's a typo.
Yeah, it's a typo, yeah.
No one, okay.
That's a typo. Yeah, we didn't catch that one. And so on mine, I wrote one or two.
You had wrote it on this one, too.
Uh-huh, I caught it on this, but too late on the...
So that's your gimme, that's the error we find, and everybody feels good because we got an error then, right?
Yeah. Well, you should have seen the errors before. Smokey had E's in them. Some pages were 53 and then 52, 54. They had several errors.
I just wouldn't want to omit some... I just wouldn't wanna omit something that we're gonna agree to later on.
Nope. So back to what Alexa said, you can sure write them a letter, I would address it to Kelly Pascal, she's their public relations officer.
Is she in the?
At Fort Riley.
In the department, the army?
Uh-huh.
Department of Defense or whatever?
Uh, US Department of Army, Fort Riley, and Public Relations Officer Kelly Pascal. Peskow, it's P.E.S.K.O.W. Just trying to remember, Kel- I think Kelly has two E's, K.E.L.L.E.Y. Pascal.
Well, they're currently deploying now, right?
Yeah, they haven't been much, because the last six, seven months, they've been deployed into Middle East, into West Asia, and then Eastern Asia, like South Korea area.
But they have trained here before?
Oh, yeah.
How come they're?
The last four years.
How come we're doing this now, and they've done this before with no, uh, no input from us county, to the county, now all of a sudden they want some, or what?
Well, yeah, they, they need some if, oh, if they want all of these things considered, they need that input.
Okay.
And that's where Tim has been on the committee for the last year of kind of research, it just takes time to research and dialogue.
Gonna say, usually the military flies over us.
They do whatever they want.
They do whatever they want, they're flying Blackhawks, they're flying over all the time, and fighters and bombers.
They practice aerial refueling in my pasture.
Yeah.
And those things you notice, 'cause they're lower, whereas these you don't, because they're, they tend to be higher, and they blend in, they're camouflaged with the colors.
They don't really fly over our houses, 'cause they, they east of us a couple miles.
Yeah, they're actually east, closer to the old missile base.
Now, over Ellsworth, they are, F-seventeens, F-sixteens, they're right over the city of Ellsworth, practicing.
Well, they do that around here a lot too, they bombed the hell out of Goldenrod Elevator all summer long.
Oh, they did? Well, they drop on it.
Nothing, just rolling in hot, make a dive, nothing on the ground.
So that was just the id- identity.
Brighten your day if you're riding a tractor out there half asleep, I can tell you.
Yeah, they just see Blackhawks come through here. Sometimes, in different groups.
So we just need to consider up on this and decide if we wanna play, and if we wanna play, what we wanna play with.
That's right, it's, it's certainly up to you, these are coming, oh, I wouldn't call it grassroots, because there's a committee that's looked at these. But in reality, it is coming from the higher level down, as far as Fort Riley is already practicing, they're doing things. They'd like to continue practicing beyond this zone to go to Fort Carson, Colorado. And things such as, so dark skies policies, that's not a big deal in Lincoln County. But it's just an energy-saving kind of idea, that's really trying to keep light going down instead of going up into the atmosphere. That's their suggestion, those kinds of things, energy efficiency.
Does that keep light going down instead of up? What exactly does that mean?
Well, on certain light poles, it means there might be a shade over the light, a canopy over the light. Now, it just fits right on top of, so it forces the light going down, whereas it goes up into the sky, kinda thing. For these unmanned aircraft, the reason that they toss that in there as a suggestion is because it's just putting more light up into where their corridor is.
Not block their own visual perception of things, is that?
In an individual farm or individual house in the country, or even say a Beverly, it's not putting up much light in general. I've flown over a couple times going to Denver, and it's just, you don't see too much of it.
Right.
Hays, yeah, Lincoln, somewhat, but, and it's also, it's an energy savings for those that have lights in their yards of just forcing it all down and keeping it in the yard instead of going up, so, unless you wanna watch the bats. Then you can see those easier. But yep, this is for Lincoln County considerations, Rhonda and Truitt have one up there, so they can see those, the appraisers.
You need to have us make some decision what we need to do by the end of this month?
Yep, I would say so, because we're working with Flint Hills on the eastern side, the Geary Riley County areas on the application to economic opportunity, or economic, uh, Office of Economic Adjustment in the Department of Defense, that's the grant request. Because Clay County and Ellsworth County both want to do something, I'll be talking with Celine County tomorrow, but theirs are fairly minor, 'cause they only have, well, on the map, very little space, but just three or four miles into this corridor. But simple little recommendations for their existing comprehensive plans or programs that they could consider, so.
Do you have any personal suggestions what we should do here, what policy or procedure we should?
Well.
Uh, recommend or require?
You might have some sighting guidelines for solar farms, 'cause that is a realistic kind of endeavor. Uh, that could help for crop dusters even, but they put a lot of reflection back off of those. But that's just one, one thought. I don't know how likely.
I have a question, we have a few minutes left in your time slot, um, what exactly are we gaining? I mean, if we're doing the cost sharing, and I apologize, I can't really read all the material right now, but what exactly are we gaining with this monetary investment? What is the county gaining by putting any money into any of this?
Well, what you would gain, you might have some procedures that could help with other things, some policy. That's the way Clay County and Ellsworth County are looking at it, because they can get some funds to help with broader planning type endeavors to do other things beyond the unmanned aircraft system, oh, project. But there's.
Could you give me a specific example? I'm just trying to envision what Lincoln County, if we're going to invest twenty percent of the funds into any project, whatever a hundred percent is in a total figure.
It would be ninety percent plant and ten percent in-kind.
I'm sorry, ten percent, I, I was thinking eighty, twenty, okay, so ten percent.
And the in-kind could come from Appraiser's Office Activity Research, just like it had on the, the project that you have. That's where a lot of the in-kind came, especially from Celine County. But we had a lot of research from all the Appraisers Office to get to where these are at.
Is that who paid for this re- report here?
Uh-huh, same funding source, in ninety-ten, split ratio. We also used Mileys that Tim had coming to a corridor meeting, or if he rode with me to a corridor planning committee kind of meeting. Uh, but that all counted. Well, one specific example could be the solar farms. If somebody came here, talked to Kelly, said, we'd like to develop a solar farm in the county, well, if you had a certain sighting guideline in place that could direct them to certain parts of the county or certain areas, and it might be what I'd call some specification type details on how that would develop. Now, we're talking quite a few solar panels, not just one or two or three or four somebody could put on the house, and somebody's probably done that on the house. But what Lincoln County could get out of it is something like that, a specific recommendation for somebody to have in parts of the county. And it, it could help crop dusters as well as the unmanned aircraft systems, or it could help other flyers in the sky users. Now, you could also have something just in regards to drones in general, that could also benefit the whole county. Could even talk about what has been happening, maybe at two or three airports in Kansas, but not very many is what I call a drone port, completely different from this, 'cause these aren't coming down to land. But a drone port development, kind of a standard for Lincoln County, could come out of some of this dialogue and conversation. That's where drones go together and fix, they work together on their equipment and collaborate, like an airport is.
Like our airport, have them land here.
But, yeah, just working on.
Service area?
Yeah, and it doesn't have to be at an airport, but usually they are not far from an airport, that's a concept that's kind of newish.
Really, what you're kinda asking for is like some zoning type requirements really for something like this in a way, right? We really don't have any zoning.
You don't have any of that, and it's not a strong recommendation, comprehensive planning doesn't mean zoning. It can mean just researching what's there and identifying certain places are better for hog farming, or certain places are better for putting wind farms up than others. That's largely what comprehensive planning is talking about, is research of different uses for the landscape.
Doug, does Clay County have a comprehensive plan that's available to the public?
Yeah.
'Cause I wonder if it'd be worth sending over an example, just so you can see like what, an idea of what comprehensive plan would include.
I hesitate to ask, but the nineteen eighty-nine one should be around, probably Bob Krangle was county attorney at the time, he probably has one in his office, but yours from the old days.
Well, yeah, if Ottawa or Clay County has something already existing.
Yeah.
If you could give us a copy of that, maybe we could see what they're doing, and at least give us an example of what?
Yeah, the ninety percent.
What we could look at.
Yeah, 'cause that grant would cover the development of like the entire plan like that.
That way we could something to go off of, and we could maybe look at it.
Yeah, to see if it's something you're interested in.
They have county-wide zoning.
Which department is funding the ninety percent, I mean, where's this money coming from?
The Department of Defense Office of Economic Adjustment. That, their representative was with us in a meeting two weeks ago, David Kennedy.
Out of Washington?
Uh-huh, he's Washington DC-based. And anybody that is near a military reservation of the size of Fort Riley, they go through this for various purposes. They just happen to be an unmanned aircraft kind of outreach, let's say. And Smokey Hill Weapons Range is largely because of that, because it's seventy-five miles away, or say eighty miles by this L shape. Well, they have to go through these processes because of where they're at with their training and practices.
Okay.
So we'll pursue that, and do you wanna email down to Don the comprehensive plan examples?
Yeah, if you could, please, they're not too big.
Well, they probably are, we'd have to shrink them down.
They're not a thousand paid to do that.
Possibly, if we do it this afternoon, well, nine hundred. Or they might be ninety, but it could be this afternoon, and that.
Why don't we open up?
We'll research it this afternoon, but tomorrow, my way back from Salina, might be able to drop it off.
Okay, that's okay with Don.
How are we defining a deadline for this?
Before Christmas is when I'd like to know your general thoughts, either a maybe, yea or nay. But early January is when Flint Hills needs to get the application buttoned up and sent off with our thoughts. And we could include, I mean, the whole robust scope of works that are in here and just not do it all. 'Cause David Kennedy has seen this, the federal guy, so he says, where he's from, it's a much more urbanized area. Or in working with a base, uh, can't remember what it is, at Homestead, Florida, or the one at Biloxi, Mississippi. Now, those are more urbanized, there's a lot more density around those, so dark skies policies come into play a lot, so he's used to seeing this kinda stuff, but that's the timing.
And is Mr. Meyer, on the committee, was there any talk about kind of a conjoined effort to get some funding for the counties instead of the counties having to put any money into this program?
No, I don't recall him ever talking much about county funding, some of it.
It's all in-kind on the match.
But you're still talking about expense, I'm talking about income. I mean, if the federal government wants to infringe on our state property and our individual property and the public property, they should be paying for it, not us paying for them to come and utilize our space.
I'm sure they have some answer to that question, this can't be the first time it's come up, so.
When you write your letter to Kelly, go ahead and include those questions in there.
Yeah, I mean, I would think that our collaborative effort in north central Kansas should be to get some, some of our tax dollars back, get some of our federal tax dollars back. If they're gonna be expending our tax dollars to do experimental, you know, drone practicing, then why should we have to fund it too? I don't care if it's in-kind, volunteer, or whatever, I'm talking about expense versus income.
And all they're asking for isn't, they're not requiring anything, this is an opportunity for Lincoln County to develop, if you have interest, a full comprehensive plan that, that may include a few things from these that are just recommendations, they're not requirements. So really, I guess I would encourage you to think about this as an opportunity to be able to have a comprehensive plan done at no monetary value other than a few hours from maybe some of the offices in the courthouse.
What purpose is the comprehensive plan going to serve?
Well, you kinda make it your own, you.
Whatever you want it to.
Yes, whatever you want it, like the old.
My original question, why wasn't the purpose of the comprehensive plan to capture funding for the counties that this is going to affect?
It, it could be.
Of the, but it should've been a regional plan for everyone to be capitalizing on this opportunity, I mean, I want my federal tax dollars back then.
Yeah, it could be, in our comprehensive strategies, the north centrals, we include this kind of project in there so that we can go and help with other planning endeavors at local levels, at individuals, let alone on, this is quasi-regional, 'cause it's five counties, so it's a, a broad area.
Imagine if we could campaign with five counties all together saying, no, federal government, you will not use our airspace unless you pay us for it. We're not gonna pay you to come in and practice over top of our heads, we're going to collaboratively have an effort, and this comprehensive plan means it's worth X amount of dollars to us, we're not gonna give you anything, or just don't come in, or don't stay and keep practicing. You know, I mean, I feel like this plan really went in the direction, and now you're asking for two weeks for us to come up with a conclusion here. When did these other counties put these plans together?
Two thousand and four on Clay County, and Ottawa County just updated theirs last year, but it was probably two thousand and four or five when they had done their first one.
And Lincoln County, how, I mean, they're spanning us from border to border.
Mm-hmm. Well, it's up in the northeast part of the county and then going south.
Mm-hmm, I mean, it's, we're a huge portion of that runway, so to speak.
Ottawa County, it goes east to west, and Clay County goes east to west in the.
Well, it just feels a little bit like a midnight deal here, I'm a little concerned that there's, that it's asking something from us within two weeks that could affect our entire future of utilizing our own airspace, which may become something that is very viable in the future for economic purposes, so just, and, and this is not aimed towards you, I know you're just the messenger. So I apologize that my tone is a little abrupt, it's just the idea that this is all coming to fruition in two weeks.
Well, the application deadline's first week of January.
And I have a question about this, uh, if we make some procedural thing here, then are we then obligated to, say that then the United States Air Force or the federal government has access there, and they have authority and control over that, and we don't have no more say-so over that, or are we giving away some rights by doing this, do they?
No, they already have that from the Federal Aviation Administration.
Okay.
It's already blessed. That was done before we even knew about.
So really, this is, they already have the authority to fly over it anyway.
Yeah.
So really, we're not really giving them no more.
It's just for, now, five years later, kinda thing, there's communication happening.
Okay, well, we're getting, uh, on time, we got another appointment here, Tim, you got any more?
Better late than never.
Okay, well, we'll discuss it, we have a, Rhonda's coming up, Alexis, uh.
Okay.
We'll move on, huh? Thank you guys for coming.
Yes, thank you for presenting the information.
And we'll drop off an example comprehensive plan.
Yeah, if you could, and we'll discuss it among us here.
All right.
Thanks.
See you later.
Rhonda escaped, didn't she?
She was there.
Come in out of the rain.
Am I next?
Yeah, come on up, brother.
Okay, as I look around, I'm going to get iced, so I don't.
Alexis is on remote here.
Okay.
Hi.
How are you?
Hey.
So windy day in Kansas.
Windy and chilly, huh?
Yes.
That wind's a little chilly.
Yeah, it just kinda goes right through.
Tell us, you have a little bit of good news, 'cause we were just asked to expend money that isn't in our budget. that isn't in our budget.
Well, I'm not going to ask you to spend any extra money today, how about that?
Yeah.
Thank you.
Here's one for Alexis.
I'll put one over here.
Thank you. Well, I'll jump right to the part that Alexis is alluding to, and we'll go through the rest in a little bit. The rates have held, we have no rate change. So I think that was the best news we had heard. Blue Cross had told us it would take several days to get it through, possibly a couple of weeks. And we're already approved, so we're good. We don't have to worry about going to the employees and saying, hey, you might have to pay more, and we're coming back to you all. So that was, that was a blessing.
Yeah, yeah.
So, and of course, we have Thanksgiving in between here, so we have a little holiday there that you just never know how long it's really going to take for this to happen. So, so we were blessed by that. Just have a sheet of information on kind of where we've been and where we're going. This is just kind of what we do after our enrollment, and we know kind of where we're at, we want to give you an update. Our open enrollment meetings, of course, were held on the 19th. We completed our open enrollment and picked up the forms, and we reviewed those on November 20th. We had signed contracts, Alexis had signed those in Wichita, but they all went to the carriers on the 21st, once we had forms and enrollment forms. We send those all together. Lincoln County, we were missing a few forms that were not completed in open enrollment. You know, people are off, we had a few people that couldn't be there. And all the forms were back to us, and we reviewed them by December 3rd. So, those all went into Blue Cross. We had sent Blue Cross a preliminary file based on the few that we were missing, so she could get started on getting it in. So we're hoping that helped with getting us ID cards here soon. So, what is coming up next is there will be a payroll deduction report based on all of the enrollments that's going to be to Dawn sometime this week. We hope sooner than the 12th, but I know your payroll's coming up, so it'll allow you time to get that inputted. And this will be what everyone is having taken out of their paycheck for the medical, the dental, the vision if they chose that, and also the flexible spending account, or the HSA. So that will be coming up, Sherry's about done with that. Alice is really, just wants to approve it today, so I think you'll have it Dawn here before you know it. There is a chance, even though we got everything to Blue Cross as quick as possible, they're running behind, I talked to Blue Cross again this morning. They think everyone will have ID cards the last week in December. However, there is a one-page information sheet that Blue Cross gives all of their groups, just in case it passes that deadline, on what to do if you're going to see a doctor or you have a need to pick up a prescription. So she is sending us, that will get it to Dawn, so she can send it out in an email to everyone. And that will give them a group number and how to handle that situation until they receive an ID card. So that will be coming to you this week to Dawn, just in case that happens. And again, we've confirmed that the rates will hold, which was about the best news I've had in a long time, because you just never know. Delta Dental ID cards will probably be here before the 1st of January. I talked to them last week, they look for those to probably go out between next week and Christmas. So I'm thinking they'll probably be in everybody's mailbox after Christmas. The EBC, the Flex debit cards, those will probably come in around the 10th of January. And I, again, stress that those cards will be in an envelope that you will think is one of those credit card, please apply for your credit card, and you think there's a card in there, we all just throw those away. Do not open them just in case. One of the things I want to mention to you on the Flex, we had 14 participants, which I was elated by that, I think that is wonderful news. We don't have to pay the minimum, because everybody will just be paying their, you know, the 550. We had five people take the HSA, and we will not need to do an HRA at this time because we didn't have anyone who is still working, that's the primary owner of the plan, that is over 65. So if we happen to ever have that, we put that in place at that time, so we're not paying for it until we need it, which is nice. And I have paperwork today, I need somebody to sign to go ahead and get that in. They have everybody's enrollments, but we just need to sign off on the details. We didn't want to do that till we knew that we for sure didn't have anyone in the HRA. Once we had it in there, they'd start billing you, so we didn't want to do that. Vision Care Direct.
Could you tell me, again, what the breakdown was? You said, how many plans total, and then five took the?
We had 14 that enrolled in the Flex, and we had five that enrolled in the HSA plan.
Okay.
So, again, we didn't have that many, but I can see that growing in the future. I thought it was great, since you haven't had Flex or anyone on a Flex plan, that we had 14. That was really, really nice to see. The Vision Care Direct, those ID cards might have been already be coming out there, usually really quick, but for sure by the end of December. What will happen is, once the billings start coming in, once everybody's ID cards go out, there will be your new bills coming in. What we'd like to have is, Dawn will reconcile those, send any changes to us. We will get those to the carriers and make any corrections as we need to. So that will happen, so we can get those errors fixed as quick as we can. And then going forward, as you have new hires and terminations, we'd like to have that information just in a quick email by the 15th, so we can know who we need to visit with on new hires, and also who we need to send a Cobra packet for you to hand out, Dawn. So, that will happen. So, once we know that, the new hires, we'll help them enroll, and we'll get that information in by the 20th of each month, so you can get them added. And again, the personalized Cobra packets will come out for anyone who's terminated, and then you will send that Dawn-certified mail, so you have a receipt that it was received.
Okay, but you'll provide the packets first?
Yes, so if you let us know as that happens, then that way we can personalize them to them and their family members. So that's kind of where we're at in this point, at this point in time. Again, ID cards are going to be, just because January is the heaviest month for any carrier creeping in, but if Blue Cross gets them out, I'll let you know as soon as they say, hey, they've been released. So you'll know that they're coming. I know the others are important, but not as important as getting that health insurance ID card in their hands. But again, she's, we're having a call with her once a week to see where our status is, and if she knows anything in between, she's going to let us know about that. So, we're moving forward, our rates held, so I was able to sleep a little better. I didn't want to come up here and say they changed 5 or 10%, so everything went really well.
Good. So now officially, our regular insurance that we got now, ANZA, it's 31st of December, right?
Yes, it does.
And January 1, we have this new insurance.
January 1, you will have this new one.
And hopefully, we'll have, and we may not have our insurance cards and all that, but we're going to get a sheet, you said, so if we would have an emergency, January 1, we could go to the hospital and say we got this new information.
Yeah, take that sheet. Blue Cross is really trying to get them out, like a couple of days after Christmas at the latest, but they won't promise us. So, but that's really their goal.
Okay.
You know, if they get them out before Christmas, they will, but they're already getting people in our dental system, obviously, they've had the information. So, they said about three to four weeks after that, well, when I talked to her today, she said, you know, they're still behind, but they're moving. So she's seeing other groups starting to get cards that were, you know, November enrollments as well. So, which is very positive.
Okay.
So, but again, as soon as I know, we will let Dawn know, so everybody can breathe. On the right side of your packet, I just have our December updates. One of the things that you'll notice here on our benefits buzz is the information on the 2020 Flex contributions, which we were able to allow everyone to take up to $27.50. And this literally was decided after our meeting the other day. So, they've been going up $50 every year, but they did again. So, $27.50 was our maximum, I think we might have had one person take that. And it also alludes to qualified transportation benefits increased a little bit, and just a little bit of information that pertains to your group at this point. On the next page, you'll see your HR brief and a little information on that, and then your Live Well, Work Well. And Dawn, in your packet, I've attached, put together like 10 of these. If you just want to put them around the county on the Live Well, Work Well piece, you're welcome to do that. And then the last piece of information I have is, I need some signatures for Employee Benefit Corporation. And Alexis, I know you're the chair this year, is there, do I need to leave these for your signature, or is there someone else that can sign these today?
I move to appoint Commissioner Lowman, the vice chair, to assign the health insurance paperwork for the new plan.
I'll second that.
Seconded to appoint the vice chair, any further questions? Those people vote aye?
Aye.
Aye. None opposed, motion carries.
You mean, come over there?
I'll hand them over there to you, Randy, that's okay. And I have two sets, and that way we'll have one original for Dawn to have here at the county, and then one to send in to EBC, and I've highlighted where you need to sign, and mainly assigning, and we can fill in the rest of the information, Randy.
I don't think you ever left me.
You don't have them, because I'm waiting to have them all.
Okay.
And what Sherry does, she'll put them in a zip file for you, so you have them all in one place.
Perfect.
Including our consulting agreement. So just bear with us through our crazy time, and we'll get that to you.
Yeah, no doubt.
And then we'll also put your book that you have in a zip file too, so if someone wants to know about Flex, you could quickly pull that out. So we'll get that to you. We like it all at once, so it's not scattered.
Now, with the Flex, well, I would pull it in December, during December, which I thought doesn't need to wait till January 1.
That's totally up to you. One thing on the Flex, as you all know, that the employee has access to all of that at one time. So the way this will be set up is, as there are claims that come in, for instance, I use my debit card and you use yours, and so every week you'll get a, I think that she said it's on Tuesday, an email telling you that this is the amount that they're going to pull out of your bank account for claims. And then they'll pull that out, and then you'll have your register. It will come out like two days later.
Okay.
So.
So the flexible spending money stays local?
Yes, nothing.
Should probably have her set up a separate bank account then?
If you would like to, yes, and we would need to know those, that bank account number. That's a good idea. I always kind of recommend that, because that's employee money, and then it's sitting there. However, you know, those claims can be paid at any time during the year. So if you just put employee money in there the first month, and somebody would have, say, a $2,000 claim, you may not have that money in there. And so the other way to do that is kind of see that with taking that 12 months of claims and dividing it, or money from the employees and dividing it by four, and put a quarter's worth of that money in there just to seed it the first year, or the first of every year. So we can tell you what that amount is, Dawn, and you may want to set that in that account. See, Randy, I've got several places here to sign on this next one.
I'll probably call her out of there and ask her.
Yes, see what they want to do on it, starts with that one. And then, what I have on the bank account in here is the.
Is there a checking account?
But we may need to, and we can change that if we need to.
I'm trying to think in the back of my head, I was about to say, I'll just call them today and I'll let you know.
I won't send these until I hear from you.
Okay.
Let's see, Randy, there's, you can see where those yellow arrows are, if you'll keep flipping.
You can have that folder back.
Oh, thank you. That's just fine and dandy by me, I will use it another time. And then, even though we have holidays coming up, I will be keeping in touch with Dawn on ID cards and those kinds of things. We'll probably kind of let everybody kind of get going in January, and then we'll plan, you know, to keep in touch if we need to come up and meet with anybody, if anyone new has come in that's not familiar with the plan. Whatever kind of noise you're getting, Dawn, if you need some help, let us know. We will come back in January, otherwise, we'll probably start with February, kind of giving you an update on how things are going. And then we will do a quarterly meeting with the commission. It will be, for instance, January, March, and April will have, should have utilization reports from Blue Cross. So we'll do that quarterly meeting again at the middle of the month following the quarter, sometime, once we get those reports, just to kind of see how we're going. The first quarter will probably be very, yes, we'll all like the first quarter, most likely. And then we'll just see how things go, so we can monitor that as we get close to about August and see what we want to do for next year. So, a work in progress, as always.
Are the actual rates, you projected with the last figures when you were doing the open enrollment?
Yes.
Is that the, okay?
Yes.
Was you thinking they would probably go up, or?
You know, initially, I thought they might, just due to the health statements that we did receive. But we were missing 17, so it was really hard to judge from the health statements, so. And I noticed at the meetings, we had several, quite a few, handful of new people, at least, that came and said that they were new and they weren't on the list yet. And so, that always makes me a little bit nervous, because we didn't have any information on those people. So, you know, and that's just part of change, and it's scary. But now that we're there, we just need to watch those claims and see how they come in, and make sure your employees are understanding the benefits. And again, I think we'll add more to the Flex going forward once people kind of understand that benefit, because it does roll over anything under $500. The HSA, for those who maybe took the Flex plan this year, they can use that money up first if they would like to, or that money will sit there till they have an HSA maybe next year, or if they want to just keep it there, it's a savings account, it's their money. So. I just wanted to tell you all Merry Christmas, and I have.
Is it slosh?
Nope.
Oh, not that merry, huh?
No, not that merry, darn. It's just a thank you for, and again, this is PIC's 20th year, we're pretty excited about that. And Dawn. And Alexis, I will leave yours here. Nothing much, just a thank you.
Thank you very much.
And Hannah's been quite helpful, if you would mind sharing that.
Would, thank you, I don't mind.
Yeah, she's been really good to work with Sherry on a couple of things that last minute for us, when you're down here in a meeting and.
There you go.
Well, thanks. Well, thank you all, I appreciate your time, and I'm excited to be a part of Lincoln County.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, thanks for all the work you've done.
Oh, yeah.
You've been very helpful, and like you said, we've increased the FSA. I think that's because you did a good job of explaining.
Alice does good meetings, she really does.
Well, you explained that, and a lot of the HSA, FSA, a lot of people, I don't think, knew really what they were, so people are afraid to sign up for something and they really don't understand it. And I think you did a good job of pointing that out.
Well, we appreciate that, and I think too, a lot of people remember the days when Flex was use or lose. And I think that's made a big difference when you have employee meetings and you can say, hey, it's not that way anymore. And I think, again, it's just that education process, and that's one of the things that we pride ourselves in, is, you know, we want to help the employees understand, and if they don't, and they need a one-on-one meeting, hey, we're going to sit down. Because I think half of the problem is, a lot of times, is people may not like something, but they just don't understand it, and once they do, then they're fine. I mean, it's frustrating when you don't understand it. And don't be afraid to ask, because, you know, if you don't ask, you're never going to know.
Right.
And we all have to ask questions.
Yep.
That's how we learn, so, thank you, Merry Christmas, and we'll see you in the new year.
Thanks.
Take care. Appreciate your time.
Thank you.
Thanks, Dawn, talk to you soon.
Mr. Walter?
Yes, sir, I didn't bring you a Christmas present, I'm sorry.
Where's my present?
Yeah, I.
That's the door.
Yeah, that's it.
All right, yeah, I got some bids in on the trucks, here's kind of what I need to discuss with you guys today.
It's still sitting down there, isn't it?
Oh, yeah.
The old truck.
Oh, yeah, you bet.
And Alexis is on, on remote, so.
No problem.
She's here.
No problem.
Okay.
Let me have one of those, somebody got two of them.
I got Alexis one.
Okay, let me use that one, so we're going to know. All right, ambulance bids, hey, these are really pretty darn good. This is a remount, and that. This is a remount and that is what I wanted for that other truck, truck number 35. The box is impeccable. My gosh, the truck doesn't have very many miles on it. It's just happens to have been born with a six liter Ford diesel, which is a nightmare. And there's one bid from ARV and here's the second one from Osage. And that bid from ARV, as you can see, beats it by about 14.5, 14,500 bucks. That's quite a good company. They're both out of Missouri. The Osage does come with a loaner truck. The ARV doesn't come with a loaner truck. But we've got a truck in Sylvan, so they claim that they can remount it in 90 days, which is pretty good. Osage is claiming 200 days. That's a long, long.
What is a loaner truck?
A loaner. One, they loan us, an ambulance.
Oh, oh, during the time that they're doing the repairs. I'm sorry, a loaner.
Just to update us all again here, I talked to Derek before and we had before Alexis, you know, that one of his trucks or one of his ambulances, the actual truck and the motors not performing very well. And that's kind of why I asked him to bring to us some bids on this. So just to update us all again where we're at here. That's what Derek's doing now.
Okay, can you tell me the totals for those two?
Yeah. Let's see. Here you go, boys. Okay, the Osage would be 104,900. Where's your camera? Is it up there?
Yeah.
Okay.
Do you see me?
Yep, I see you. Just wanted to make sure that's where your webcam was.
Yep, 104.9.
Yep, and the other one is 89,454. And these are both identical trucks. They'd be mounted on a brand-new 2020 Chevy. I'm assuming they're Chevy, they're GM, Chevy or GMC van style with a six liter motor.
Gasoline.
Yeah, it's gas. That's right. Yep, you can no longer get the diesel in those girls.
You're saying that the actual bed or the actual box that we're using is perfectly fine?
Oh, man. It's a good one. Yeah. Yeah, that's the reason you buy a good box.
For about 15,000 then, the only difference is we get a loaner one.
Right. That's correct.
And 110 days quicker service.
And 110 days quicker service. That's right. That's a big deal.
The quicker service is the more expensive one?
No, that's the cheaper one.
Okay. Well, then I think it's kind of self-explanatory.
It's kind of a no-brainer, right? Yeah.
Seems so to me.
Yeah, it sure is. Well, and just to compare apples to apples and oranges to apples, a brand-new truck, just like we have sitting in the shed, we, they spent 185, I think 185,000 on that last year. Ellsworth just got a bid for one. They put a, a good electric self-loading cot in there. It's a quarter of a million dollars.
Wow.
Yeah, wow, is right. So, remounting if possible is definitely the way to go, guys. Any, any time.
Where are we in your capital outlay budget?
I haven't even looked this month. Last month we were in pretty good shape, but.
Not to buy an ambulance and 26,000 is what they have in their capital outlay.
Now, you, you could pay this over several years though, right Derek?
Then I haven't even delved into that yet. I just got these on Friday. I got this one on Friday. I just wanted.
It isn't like we would have to purchase it all one year or one budget, right Derek?
No.
You mean leasing it or taking out?
Probably a lease to own. And I haven't talked to the companies about that yet, Alexa.
Okay.
That, we're just in the initial phases of getting the ball.
Okay.
And so that has been, there's that part. The computer bids, believe it or not, I signed with Eagle. I was dead set on going with
Wilson.
Wilson Communication. Eagle was 50% of the money, literally. For four computers and set up ready.
So you did not reduce the amount of computers then?
No.
Okay, and then what is their new contract rate compared to what we've been paying?
270, 270, I don't know. 270 a month is what Wilson, or what Eagle is. And Wilson was going to be 500.
Dawn, we weren't paying for anything down there before?
No.
Yeah, we showed it on the list. It showed every month.
No.
The Nextec was being paid.
The cell phones. They're the same company, just two different vendors, but no.
I know, I understand that. I saw two Nextec charges on there.
I don't think so. Oh, maybe for the firewall.
Yeah, that could be.
Well, the firewall works.
I just want us to pay attention to where our budget's going into the next year. I mean, there's 270 a month that we're going to have to look at and see where we are with, I mean, I know we've been doing really well with our collections, so that's excellent.
Well, we don't have much of a choice on computers. If we don't have computers, we don't run. My runs are mandated. They have to be in within 24 hours.
And I see, I think on collections, you've got 129,000, I think this year. I saw. And I think we had a budgeted for 75,000, so they, they're above the budget. Where does that money go? That, does that go back into the EMS budget Dawn? Or does that go into a general fund budget when they do collections?
It goes into the EMS budget.
Oh, I didn't know how that worked, okay.
And then at the end of the year, if there's enough money, I'll amend the budget and we can transfer it into the capital outlay fund.
Capital outlay, okay.
Okay, and then moving on, the Medicare compliance thing that was going to kick off, that is going to kick off in 2020. We had a phone conversation on that, well, a phone webinar, quote unquote, the other day. Honestly, it's really fairly straightforward if they'd use the right terminology. As they're all accountants who were doing the talking, so it was up here. Basically what we're going to have to keep track of through the year, wages, benefits, cost of equipment, expendables, et cetera. Everything, you keep track of everything. The building, the trucks, depreciation on the trucks, the cost of the building, rentals, anything we have a rental on which we do not, that I can think of. Depreciation costs, keep track of all that. I assumed that there'd be some sort of a paradigm that you could plug numbers into and they haven't developed that at all yet. This is something that each department is going to develop. Region four EMS tomorrow, we have a meeting in Ellsworth, all of us. And since six of us out of region four have been chosen, we're going to kind of get our heads together hopefully and come up with a, a pattern to plug numbers into as we go, so it isn't such a mess at the end of 2020.
And using the QuickBooks that has all those.
I'm sure that'd be fine.
Spreadsheet, it's just a, that we've been using for 20 years.
It's going to be pretty straightforward. All of our numbers basically come out on a spreadsheet.
Yeah, that's, they're not asking for anything you don't know.
Absolutely not.
It's just a matter of putting in the format they want.
Have you talked to Delisa's?
Yeah, sure have, absolutely. She's going to be, she's right on in charge of it too. She.
Okay, so, I stand corrected, you paid $109 for IT, which I think is the firewall.
Okay. Okay.
Okay, so it's almost a triple, not quite.
That's included in her 270, is it Dawn? So we're only up 165, more or less.
190 to 270.
Yeah.
Is $80.
$8, yeah.
Oh, I thought you said 109.
Oh, I did say 109. It was 109, sorry. Yeah, you're right. God.
We're all doing so well with numbers.
I just want to make sure that we're paying attention as we roll over into the new budget. And then hopefully we'll have some turnover into the capital outlay because you haven't, because you've collected more than we budgeted we were going to collect. And I don't think we've spent any extraordinary expenses that I can think of.
No, I've been keeping an eye on that. No, I, I, nothing.
So I do have a concern though, I'm, I'm not up to date on what this medic, did you say it's Medicare compliance?
Yeah, Medicare to make sure that, that they're not overpaying or whatever. Medicare is going to analyze every ambulance department, I think in the United States, over a period of time.
Yeah, they track all your expenses to, to adjust their pay rate. But I'm, my concern for us is who's going to do all this?
Well, I am and Delisa's is.
Yeah, it's a requirement or we won't give our money.
It, it cuts us back 10% if we don't do it, so it.
Well, I'm suggesting that we don't. I'm just saying, right now, we have Delisa's doing our billing and don't we have the health department doing our, tracking our income?
Yeah.
So are you personally going to have time to, I mean, I'm just a little concerned about the scheduling of being, if you're doing two 24-hour shifts, you know, I mean, it seems like that's going to be an extra workload than what you're already doing.
I don't think it'll be that difficult.
I think they're just going to pull their information that they already have.
I look at the numbers every month anyway. It's a matter of just transposing them on another sheet or on another webpage. I mean, that's not a big deal. I, I don't see any problems with it.
It's just that it has to get done.
Absolutely. It's huge. And they really don't want it until the end of the year and that won't work. We don't want to wait until.
It's just part of that Lincoln County get picked for part of this Medicare audit thing.
It is.
We're part of that. That's what this is, okay.
Right.
Are we currently billing from the health department to the EMS for the hours that any of their staff does for your collections?
I believe the answer is yes, because I asked Hannah and she said that they were, but I hadn't really paid attention, so.
I think so.
But I believe it.
Is that a contractual line item expense or?
Yes.
I'd like the department has to get a little tighter handle on their budgetary choices, you know?
The health department is sending an invoice up, is what I kind of understood Hannah to say, just like I, I had been doing.
And then Derek, are you considering that a contractual expense or a commodities expense? How are, how, how are you paying them?
How would you put it? I don't have a clue.
I'm assuming she's recording and it is contractual, but I can look really quick. Just give me a quick sec.
Do you, what, how much do you pay, do you know, out of your budget to them?
Well, we have good news for you to give to your employees. The rates have not changed for our health insurance, so they are going to end up with a little bit of a savings with our new, our new program.
Okay.
That's good.
Good.
She's taking it out of the contractual line item.
Okay. And what are we spending? Do you have a recent bill there, just out of curiosity?
For October, it was 349.44 and for us, November, it was 232.79.
About 300.
Around $300.
300 a month approximately. And that's working for you to, because that's.
Well, if she's getting money back, it certainly is.
Well, you've got 129,000 this year. The budget's 75, so you're 50,000.
Well, and as they catch up on that, that will decrease because some of that was.
Some of that was last year's billing that didn't get billed, okay.
Yeah, correct. You know, our numbers are in line with last year at least, as far as run numbers. Should get to 400 by the end of the year. It'll be a busy couple of weeks if we do.
I'd ask that you pardon my ignorance on this, but do we have one particular setup in one ambulance that is more for advanced life support than any other?
Nope, every, all three of them are identical by state law.
And, and they're all to the, and it's the most advanced setup? Is that what I'm understanding?
That's correct.
Okay.
Yep.
Okay, someone had asked me how many ambulances we have that are to a specific standard. I didn't know what.
All three of them. All three of them are. I have contemplated downgrading Sylvan a little bit because we don't have ALS over there all the time. But I haven't done that because if I have myself or one of my EMTAs slide to Sylvan, they need the same stuff on the truck. So I, no, I haven't done that at all.
So it's just a matter of whether or not the staffing is capable of using whatever the facilities are that are in the block, okay?
That's correct. Yep, yep, they're all set up identically. Okay, that's all I have. Numbers are looking good, numbers are.
Okay.
Looking good, guys.
Alexis, do you have any other questions?
No, but I would like to explain to you, we did something different with our holiday this year. In the past, everyone had gotten four hours paid leave for the Christmas Eve. So that meant that everyone else, particularly in your department, was getting an extra four hours of pay that particular week. Which we kind of deemed to be, it wasn't equitable because other departments then are, you know, basically you may have two people that are not scheduled to work on Christmas Eve at all, but they're getting extra pay just because everyone else wasn't working. But they've already gotten their 48 hours for the week. So we, did you determine whether or not, no, they didn't have to do anything differently, correct Dawn, for his department then?
No.
Whoever's working, so whoever you have on staff for Christmas Eve is going to get their regular shift, but everybody gets Christmas Day extra pay. Is that correct?
Correct.
Okay.
It's holiday, so they're not going to grant holiday for Christmas Eve. So if you're, please ask.
I just wanted to make sure that was clear. It's not the same as it was last year. But you, your whole crew gets their Christmas Day, but we're not doing anything extra for Christmas Eve.
Okay.
Okay.
That's fine.
Okay, thanks.
On the personal, how's the general?
Good.
He's still two star, three star?
Who, which one's that?
Well, that's your, one of your relatives?
Yeah, yeah, he is. He's still up there playing independent on that.
Two, two stars?
Yeah.
Good. We need contacts up there.
There, there, yeah.
Did we get the issue at the building taken care of with the gutter outside, the gutter in the downstairs?
I messed with them some. I'm going to have to get some more fiberglass, but the weather kind of modified, so I haven't done any fiberglassing.
And have you searched for anyone to clean those carpets down there? Someone needs to do the carpets and the, and clean that floor. Those floors need stripped and waxed.
I don't know anybody. I don't have a soul.
Well, Service Master, do they have a, I think they have a Solina office. Could start there.
They're, if they do a good job, we've used Service Master, they know all right. They do catastrophic cleaning for fires and murders and stuff too.
Murders.
They do. You know, you've got to have a special team for a murder.
Blood is.
I'll get, I'll get a bid from them. Okay.
Okay.
See y'all.
Thanks, Derek. That's the end of our agenda today, or for right now. Alexis, do you have anything else?
I just want to jump back to that issue that was brought to us by more central regional planning commission. I'm, I'm disturbed that we were given two to three weeks to make such an important decision. I'm also disturbed that regionally, we weren't seeking money. I feel like we're being asked to expend money for the federal government to continue a preparation project and practicing. I mean, why should we have to expend any resources for that? That doesn't seem kosher.
Well, as I understand it, they're going to fly whether we do anything or not. The FAA has already cleared that. And the plan itself is so we can integrate anything we would like to put into a regional plan as far as future looks at, at new wind towers or solar power. Or I don't think we have any flying farmers anymore. If we have any flying farmers, we need a way to coordinate that with the airspace. And with Clay Harrian coordinating the airspace and, and all other farmers like Timmy Meyer could be looking with a drone to fly around and look at his cows and stuff. We don't have to do anything on that plan, but if we do, they give us the opportunity to have it integrated with the other counties around. If we don't do anything, they're still going to fly through our airspace, no matter what.
Yeah, they're going to do it either way Alexis. I don't, it's, it gives us kind of an opportunity to maybe, I don't know.
To pay for us to have an opinion? I mean, I'm very, I'm concerned because I think a good leader for a region would say, hey, we're going to get compensation. If you're going to use us as a, a runway of sorts, then we're basically allowing you in our space. I mean, it's my understanding that it's public airspace from a certain amount up. If you know it's going to be routinely used or something.
We don't get anything for them flying. FAA has already cleared it five years ago, he said. So it's already a done deal as far as us renting our airspace. We don't have any option as to renting the airspace. They're going to fly no matter what we do.
Well, that's not how government structure is supposed to work. States have rights, local municipality. Well, that's not how government structure is supposed to work. States have rights, local municipalities have rights. The federal government coming and traipsing through and then demanding that we give up a portion of our resources to have a say-so in some plan is just absurd.
Well, they don't want any of our resources only if we want to participate in the plan.
That's what I'm saying. What are we buying then? What are we, what are we investing in? To just say that our name's on a piece of paper that someone else, I mean, they, initially, he was, Mr. McKinney was making it sound as if we were signing up to volunteer to notify Fort Riley anytime we wanted to do something within this region of airspace.
You have to do that anyway. If Clay wants to fly above two thousand feet in that, uh, thing, he has to call. Just no more than, uh, an FAA requirement on that. That's their airspace from two to thr- two to five thousand feet along that dog leg. That belongs to the.
That's what I'm saying. They do not own that. That's what I'm saying. They have access to it, but they don't own it.
They have the, the proprietary rights to it. If you wanna get in their airspace, you gotta call them and get permission.
Military takes precedent now, now we're military, yeah.
This is a whole different issue. I think they're trying to get us, or see if we would like to get involved in the plan on how we can integrate that airspace and the control of that airspace with our county and whatever things we'd have coming up in development. For example, if we wanna put a wind farm out there on Timmy Meyer's place, we would need to coordinate that with Fort Riley. And so we would have to integrate our plan with their plan and see how that's gonna work. But if we don't wanna mess with their plan or waste any time on it, we don't have to do anything. There's not gonna be any money coming from the federal government to write that plan, I don't believe.
Well, I think we would do a ten percent. They'd do a ninety percent for a, but it'd just be a document plan.
That's all it is.
And he said like twenty thousand dollar plan, which is, uh, that doesn't help the county, uh, so. It just gets us involved with this total plan with the region for this unmanned, uh, of these drones.
Aircraft system, UAS.
I would say, three whole years, I've never seen a better example of unnecessary bureaucracy that is a trampling of rights. That's all I would say.
Welcome to the federal government, right?
Well, especially military.
If it isn't enough to us, if it isn't enough to us to, in our duty to hold our own feet to the fire in, in asserting our own, you call it proprietary rights, then who's gonna do it?
There's, that's a done deal. There's nothing we can do to interfere with anything flying in that airspace. That's been done for five years. They're not asking us our approval to approve them using that airspace. They're telling us that this is our airspace.
Then why are they addressing and broaching the subject at all? I think it's a formality. Once you do something and you say, oh, you know, I've set a precedent, then no one's gonna really question the validity of it happening originally because everyone thinks of it as a past action. That doesn't mean that it was actually stepped into appropriately.
Well, that's what I asked Doug.
Yes?
Well, I said, why are they coming to us now to want us to get involved in a study when you've been doing this for five years already?
Exactly, because it's easier for you to accept now that they're bringing it to you in hindsight.
Well, I don't, yeah, I don't see anything that's behind this, so, in a way, I agree with you. It's, but the military, you got federal government, especially military, they're gonna do what they kinda want. And they'll save for national security or training reasons and not a trump about anything else.
This, this plan, I'm gonna quote, "is to be used to help local jurisdictions guide community developments that protects and preserves military residence and defense capabilities while supporting continued economic development and so forth."
Okay, so basically what you just read means that we are now limiting our capabilities to use that space because we are acknowledging that they have proprietary use. We never acknowledged that yet.
We don't have to. Five years ago, the federal government took that step. They owned, we had to object five years ago.
An external example. In South Africa, they created a law that if you squat, you have squatter's rights. So someone can come and pitch a tent on the corner of your field, and if it remains there for forty-eight hours without you objecting to it, then it becomes their own property. This is, this, this is a similar analogy. You cannot just accept the fact that they're doing something and that makes it okay.
When they put the phrase together, "defense readiness," you're gonna lose every time because the federal government, particularly the Department of Defense, can come in and do whatever they want. They don't even have to use imminent drawman in most cases.
Well, I'm not in favor of a police state, and I'm not in favor of any kind of martial law, so that's ridiculous. They have to have our permission to be among us. Otherwise, that's the whole reason why you don't station your troops stateside, and you station them in external bases, because you're not trying to enforce anything internally on your own people.
That's correct. Posse Comitata says you can't do that. But this is a done deal as far as that airspace. There's nothing we can do, no court case we could generate that would cause them to relinquish that airspace.
That's actually not true, because while we were sitting there, I was looking up the court case where a farmer said that flying through, the military scared his chickens to death, and he won his court case, and that's where they deemed that eighty-three feet high and lower is private airspace. So I, you know, technically, you own property, you own eighty-three feet in the air above you.
They're from two thousand to five thousand feet up.
I understand that, but it's all relative, is what I'm saying. If the county has public property, if the people who live here technically own the airspace above them, you know, that to me, I don't think, I don't think just going along with it and giving implicit permission is okay. I mean, it was basically presented to us on the eleventh hour as a midnight deal that was gonna take place because they're supposed to get this regional plan put together. Why has Lincoln County not been part of the actual contemplation of it?
That, we have no idea.
He said two thousand and four for whichever other county.
Clay County. They've been in a, they have a separate quarter in Clay County. They've been in it for a longer time, but, yep. Was that the Clay County plan or was that our nineteen eighty-nine plan he brought in?
Nineteen eighty-nine plan.
Be interesting to see the Clay County plan. He probably will deliver that tomorrow, he thought.
Yeah, that's fine. I mean, I'm, I wanna see what's in there. I just, I'm, I'm personally offended to watch this happen because this is how everything has been happening from the federal government and this trickle-down theory, which is all because of people's ignorance of the actual foundational law, you know, of our system. I guess I don't see a reason to spend our own tax dollars, I don't care if it's in kind or whatever, but to be incorporated in a plan that really doesn't protect any of our rights, it's just acknowledging their intrusion, is what it is. It's, it's an official acknowledgement of their intrusion, and they want us to pay for it.
Well, let's look at this plan and next week, let's see what we have gleaned from this plan, see what they really want from us.
Yeah.
Because I don't know what they want right now.
We could review it. He, Doug's gonna give us a copy of Clay County and we'll review it maybe or decide then what to do.
Okay. So my, another point of order I'd like to bring up, do we need to officially advertise for the road supervisor position?
Well, I think we do. It's open right now.
Do, do we need another road supervisor? I'm not sure we need another one. Uh, you know, we should maybe talk to our director and see what he thinks. See if he can handle the job with, uh, our, uh, office manager. Now, maybe we do. I don't, I'm not saying we don't, but we had these last, since we've had these two individuals, we've had a little bit of a conflict here. And, uh, they almost wanted to both do the same job, or at times, and they maybe didn't, weren't sure who was supposed to do what. And maybe we didn't point that out very well.
No, I agree with what you're saying. I think we need to bring the director in and have that conversation. I guess I just wanted to make sure that if we are taking applications, then we need to have it advertised. That's what I'm getting at.
Yeah, that's fine with me, too. That's fine.
In our job announcement, is that position in our, uh, open jobs announcement or not?
I have not done anything yet.
Okay, so we just had the greater operator and those low level ones, but nothing higher than that, okay. So next Monday, I guess we need to visit on that.
Maybe we should visit with our director, Highway Department Director, and see what he thinks. If he can, uh, operate without, without that. I don't, well, I don't know. I don't say, you know, maybe we should still have it. We had the position. I don't say we should close it either, so I'm not sure either what to do.
I think you were right when you said we need to speak to the director of the department. I think you were right. Um, we can discuss that later. I just wanted to make sure that we touch on that topic and don't, we don't need to let it fall by the wayside for another few months.
And also, uh, emergency manager, should we pursue something more on that, too?
Yes, we have not changed our job description, um, that we tried to create so that we could kind of combine our open part-time slot in the EMS. Um, so if we wanna change that, you know, I, that's kinda why I was asking Derek what the idea is for the requirements for the paperwork for that Medicare, um, compliance. You know, right now, we have the Health Department, which is only costing us three, three hundred some dollars a month, but they're doing some billing. You know, obviously, there's some crossover here that I think we need to look at. I really don't see the need for a full-time position there. I still see it as part-time, so if we're going to create a full-time opening so that someone is eligible for forty hours and benefits, et cetera, we really need to have a crossover position. You know, we could look at that for the second-in-command position for the Highway Department.
Yeah, I'd be willing to, I kinda agree with you there. If we could have a crossover with emergency manager with something else also. If we could find a slot like that, that would work.
Well, I think we are seeing that the loc- there are no, there's no local interest in running that part-time shift and doing the emergency management. We haven't had any applications, correct, Dawn?
No.
Okay. So we really do need to shift away from that, but I think.
Not. Not for this, not with an EMT and that combined. There was a couple of people that have expressed interest, but they're not EMTs.
Well, the other thing we can do is we can make it a part-time position, or we can contract it. I mean, I personally wouldn't mind seeing it contracted. If that person wants to do some of their paperwork and things from their own location and just be responsible to maintain the equipment and show up when something needs to be done, you can contract these types of situations. I feel that since it's a state mandated position, there's some flexibility, but we have to fund that department. You know, we don't wanna have a full-time employee. We can always contract the work.
How would you, uh, operate having a contract? Would you have to have a minimum requirements for what they would have to do and, uh?
Well, I'll give you the perfect example. Right now, Rhonda Wright is contracted to be our appraiser. Now, she is full-time, so she's working her office hours because she's responsible for running that office, but she's actually under contract, so, you know, I'm actually not speaking of a W two employee. I'm actually talking about, you know, paying, not paying someone.
Just a contractor.
But basically, you lay out in the contract what they're responsible to do, which is have this emergency management plan, do the updating every year, run the exercises, be part of the boards, maintain the equipment, and be available with, you know, a remote access such as a cellphone. Other than that, there's no physical proximity requirements for someone. I had asked that Ottawa County Emergency Manager where she is physically when something's happening, and she's just available for communication, not necessarily on any particular site.
Okay, well, I, I wouldn't be against that, Alexis, if we could find something like that. We, but we do have to address that because it is a state mandate, right, so.
We have to fund it. We have to fund it, but it, there's no mandate on the position itself. I mean, we can either combine it, have someone be accountable forty hours a week, eight-thirty, four-thirty, or, you know, in my opinion, that job should have some flexibility. So it's not necessarily fair to give it a full-time position that can make up its own hours where you don't get that in your other departments. I think it'd be more appropriate to contract it and let someone work from home. If they really wanna do that, they're performing a function, not necessarily having open office hours. I mean, you could have someone who may be interested in that kind of thing, a fire department chief or something like that, that already has a job, but can function being available for that. I mean, I don't know. You guys are gonna have to throw some more ideas out there. That's, I see it as being contractable, but.
I'm not against that. If, if we could find someone to do that situation, that'd be, if it's compliant, if we, or if we comply with all the the requirements of the job, that's all I care about. Well, anything else?
One that I have, let me see, I should.
Can I check on our schedule for the rest of the year?
I don't have that link on this computer.
Oh, I can, um.
I got my calendar here. It's not annotated correctly, I don't think.
I'll have to run up and get my calendar.
I'll, I'll call, I'll call you later on.
If we remember, I think you guys decided the thirtieth, you were gonna have an evening meeting.
I think so, but I, I didn't, I wrote that down, VOCC at night. So we meet next Monday on the sixteenth. And then we skip Christmas week, and we have a meeting on the thirtieth to do all of the end of the month, end of the year stuff.
Uh, you would have a meeting on the twenty-third, too?
On the twenty-third as well, okay.
Well, Alexis, you were asking about emails or something?
I'm trying to get on. It's not turning me on.
Okay.
Is it LC Commission?
Yes.
Ha ha, okay. Small Bridge Safety from Mike Day. Um, greetings. I have a farmstead at five oh two North two-sixtieth Road, a half a mile west of Westfall and a quarter mile north at the intersection of the driveway, and two-sixtieth is a small wooden bridge. In the near future, we would like to bring in a load of ready mix to pour a foundation. Is this bridge up to your, up to this type of load as well as regular traffic? If not, does it need to be upgraded or replaced? Thank you, Mike Day. And it has his contact information.
Okay, can we forward that to the Highway Department? I should have it in there as a contact already.
Um, it's, they sent it to him, too.
Oh, okay, great, great.
And John Thomas, Inc., thanks for visiting JTI at the KAC conference. So that's probably just a, um, junk mail. Okay, from Steve Granzo, on Wednesday at one fifty-three. Per the Cora, I am providing the following estimates of the cost. Oh, that was on eleven twelve. I think you guys already got that one.
He gave us the twelve thousand dollar estimate, and then I emailed him back that I would be available to come in person because we, we talked about that at the meeting on last Monday.
Okay, this was last Wednesday at one fifty-three. Per the Cora, I am providing the following estimate of the cost of producing the documents requested, requested below by you. The cost to you will be at least a hundred and sixty-five dollars and does not include materials. This is a preliminary estimate. The actual cost may be higher. Any costs for providing the material must be paid prior to making the del- prior to delivering the materials to you. Do you wish to proceed, Steve Granzo?
Okay, I didn't ask him for any material. I told him I would come in person, so. Does the commission at least give me permission to respond to that email? I'll open it up and tell him that I'm still coming and not requesting papers to be copied.
I thought that's what we did last week. I thought we, well, I made a motion to.
I'm tired of having this discussion with him. We did. He just refuses to acknowledge what is actually going on.
We made a motion to, uh, withdraw that request, and then you was just, yeah, we approved you to go there physically and, and review documents.
I'm against paying a hundred and whatever it is, sixty-five dollars for you to go there and look at stuff. This should be cost-free.
I agree.
So in that light, I would be happy to have you respond to him.
Fine with me, fine with me, too.
Understood.
Incidentally, I will see him tomorrow about nine o'clock to talk about long-range planning.
Well, and also, I'm gonna remind you both, I brought up earlier that Wednesday, we have called a special meeting at two PM this Wednesday. You can come too, if you want.
Yeah, I will.
And you're gonna still be out of town, right, Alexis?
Yes.
But I'll go Wednesday.
You said that was at two PM.
Okay, I would appreciate that.
At the, at the hospital board, boardroom. What, Alexis?
It would be fine for you to write down what happened at the meeting and send it in an email to us.
Yeah, I will, I will. I'll take, I'll take-
But you could just update us as what-
I'll take notes and email you what happened there.
Thank you, I appreciate that. And then, in the same token, Mr. Gaywoman, you had talked about the handbook. I would really like us to firm up some of our things that we want in writing and get that done here at the beginning, at the turn of the year, you know, going into next year. Do, do some of the revisions that need done in the handbook that had been requested by the department heads. Um, we talked about a purchasing policy. We kinda verbally talked about it, we never put on paper. That road resolution, I don't know if either of you have really looked at that, but it's from the year two thousand, and that is basically the premise of all the issues that we've had on Fiftieth and Forty-Fifth Road. We were upgrading it from a dirt road to a gravel road. Now we are kind of in this limbo on the material that was used, et cetera, et cetera. So in order for the commission to properly address that, we need to revise or rescind that resolution.
And we got other handbook things, like the time clock and other stuff, we've already got proposals on.
Well, do you guys just want to do, like, a special meeting and we do nothing but revise the handbook?
I would like that. So I think we need to sit down and go paragraph by paragraph and make sure it's what we want to see.
It's hard when you ask department heads and employees to, to revise the handbook because we have our opinions, but that doesn't necessarily mean you agree with those.
Well, the dawn has already marked up some pages, right?
Yes, which doesn't necessarily mean you guys agree.
Right.
So I feel like sometimes it's like vertisim for me because why should I make those if you guys aren't saying yay or nay? Does that make sense? It just feels like it's twice the amount of work.
Sure, we should review what's already been marked up and then go with it and see if we agree or not and go from there.
And if department heads want to come, then they can come.
Yeah, I agree with that too.
Do you want to-
We need to have our own preliminary meeting, a special meeting for the commission to work on it. Even if we did it on a Monday and we took off the whole afternoon for that, you know, did our regular agenda, ten to noon, did a lunch, and then took a three-hour window in the afternoon, I think we really need to go through it ourselves, then invite the department heads, tell them what we've changed, what suggestions of theirs we've already encountered, and then do some final revisions with them.
Okay.
That's fine. Want to do that next week?
No, well, I'd like to move that into January if we're gonna do-
That's fine. Like, that's fine with me too. I didn't know how quick you wanted to address this stuff.
Well, we have four, we have four Mondays in January, the sixth, the thirteenth, the twentieth, and the twenty-seventh. No holidays, or no, when is President's Day? That's February.
February.
Um, there, Martin Luther King Day, though, I think, is, is that the thirteenth?
That's in February. No, that's January.
January.
No, his is closer to the twenty-sixth is his day. That's his birthday. I don't know where the holiday is.
The twentieth? So let's do, is that right?
Well, maybe my, you know.
This book doesn't have calendars in it or holidays.
Mine apparently just has me first in college basketball. Congratulations.
Those are important.
Had against holidays, US holidays, there we go. Um, Monday.
Yeah, the twentieth-
Yeah, January twentieth, this Martin Luther King Day.
And then the twelfth, I'm sorry, the seventeenth of February is President's Day.
Okay, so let's, let's set up the thirteenth of January, the afternoon. Yes, let's say from one thirty to three thirty, one thirty to four, something like that. Just the commission, which of course will be an open meeting, but the commission will go over the handbook. Then we can get our own notes together so that when we invite the department heads, which I think should maybe be, you probably have a lot going on on a Tuesday, Dawn, if we switched our, would our commission meeting be on the twenty-first then?
Yeah, it would be on the twenty-first.
Do you think that's too much to ask a department head to come in on the day after a holiday?
I don't think so if they know enough ahead of time.
Well, let's ask them to come in on that day, that's the very following week. It's the day after the holiday weekend. We could do an afternoon session with the department heads. Does that sound okay to everyone?
Good for me.
Fine for me.
Okay. And when is the regular hospital board meeting? Is that?
The third Thursday of the month, which should be, uh, that'd be the twenty, well, that's the twenty-fourth. No, it'd be seventeen, next Tuesday. I'll remember to go there.
Okay, so you'll be having a special meeting in two days, correct?
Yeah, Wednesday, this Wednesday at two.
And then their regular meeting is on the seventeenth?
Seventeenth, it's, that's five or six o'clock, six fifteen, six thirty.
If you get the opportunity, I would like you to ask something. Someone had brought to my attention that they do participate in some sort of Meals on Wheels.
Yes, they do.
Yep.
So how does that work? I mean, obviously, that must not be the same funding source as the Meals for Friends or whatever it's called through the Senior Center.
No, it's a completely different source.
Yeah, Senior Center has a meal, delivers meals also.
Yeah, I, I can just tell you from my grandmother's experience, uh, we would buy the meals. So you, you enroll and you tell them how many days you want. So we did for her, five days a week, but you don't, you can pick and choose, and then they deliver. Now, with my grandma, we like to like switch it back and forth because the hospital meals tend to be the same drive-in meal every single month, kind of the same, same thing. And so she would like to do, um, like hospital one month and then Senior Center another month. So we kind of rotated it back and forth. So she got some variance, so.
I was, I was actually unaware until recently that they even did that. I didn't know they offered that.
The Senior Center will also give you a frozen meal that you can take home for the weekends if you like.
Mm-hmm. I used to get them for my mom. We'd get the frozen ones and bring them home and, pretty accurate, they'd fallen out when you wanted to use them.
Well, my question for the funding is, is the hospital generating money with Meals on Wheels? Or are they, are they actually putting out money to make sure that happens? And if so, is the county then effectively subsidizing two Meals on Wheel programs? I mean, I'm, I'm wondering what that looks like financially for the hospital.
No idea.
I don't know either. I could ask them.
Yeah, I mean, just so we get a little better grasp on what are, what are their money-making endeavors and what are their money-absorbing endeavors? There are, there is a difference, you know? Okay, I think that's all I had as far as addressing some issues. We have a schedule lined up to address the handbook. Anything else?
Not for me.
Not for me.
Okay, thank you for accommodating me.
Are you planning on being back next Monday? Alexis?
Yes.
You planning on being back next Monday? Okay.
Yes.
All right.
I move adjourned.
Okay, adjourned until next Monday, ten AM. Thank you.